Vice Mayor.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City of Delray Beach's regular commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 1st, 2022 at 4:00 PM. We're a few minutes late. Please call the roll.
Mr. Frankel.
Ms. Cassell.
Here.
Mr. Ballston.
President.
Ms. Johnson.
President.
Ms. Petolia.
And here, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public on the grounds of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, agenda approval. Any changes, deletions, additions? If not, entertain a motion. Motion to approve?
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
All right, we're at the presentation portion of our meeting, and we have Mr. Moore. You are a first.
Actually, prior to the formal item being as listed on the agenda regarding the possibility of engaging with the Palm Beach County Sports Commission relative to the Billie Jean King Cup in collaboration in that regard, I'd like to respond to an experience I had recently relative to an inquiry concerning the employment rate of the Delray Beach Police Department. So my office had experienced an inquiry about that recently, and I did have a chance to spend time with leadership of the Delray Beach Police Department to talk a little bit about where we are in that regard. And much of this is a function of a recent information letter report I shared with the city commission regarding the, at that time going back a couple months, what the present employment rate had been vis-à-vis what specific strategies are being executed to get that squared away. Much of this was actually touched on during the current fiscal year proposed budget process, in which we did what we could to make sure that we keep positions at the lower echelon level in terms of police officers focusing in that regard first. So in spending time with Chief of Police Russ Major, I thought it would be a good idea to briefly update the city commission in terms of the progress being made in this regard, in that we've actually filled a number of vacancies to date that are in the pipeline to begin the academy at the beginning of the new calendar year, as well as some other strategies that will be executed in the next coming weeks so that we can achieve full employment to the extent possible. With that, I'd like to ask Mr. Russ Major, Chief of Police, to please come forward to briefly articulate the current position and direction as outlined.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, Commissioner, Mr. City Manager, City Attorney. It's a pleasure to be here today. I have good news. Since I took over in August of 2022, I made recruiting and hiring a top priority. I spent a lot of time looking through the computer, looking at the process which we had in place with regard to online hiring, and I made some significant changes. I felt it was a little antiquated and needed revamping. With that being said, we made the process more efficient as it relates to the hiring process. We need to be judicious and quick, but obviously, we don't want to sort of reduce the qualification process. But it's important that we move quickly and swiftly as we're competing with many other agencies in our area, Jupiter, Boeck, PBSO, to name a few. So hastening the process, you know, if you can drop it an extra month, if you will, if it's a three month process, if we can get it down to six weeks, eight weeks, it's a big, big adjustment. And I've managed to work with my team to get the process quicker and more efficient. Currently, we were 17 officers down, or we are 17 officers down as of today. Currently, we have four positions filled for the January Academy. We have 11 applicants in process at various aspects of the application process, which includes medical, polygraph, psychological, and background checks. We have 12 positions that we reserve for January, and we will fill those positions. The January Police Academy will be the largest academy if we get all 12, which we anticipate in police history, in our Delray PD history. We typically send a lower amount, just based on the amount of people that we have available to us, but we've been very, very progressive in relation to our shortage. And like I said, this has been a priority for me since I started. We are on track to have eight spots filled by January. Wait, sorry, we're on track to have the remaining eight spots filled. We should fill the May class. We are looking at five openings in May. We understand with the normal attrition rate, which is averaging about seven annually per year, our goal is to have six attend in the May class and the remaining openings in the August class. So we are being very aggressive. I would be remiss, though. I can't take all the credit. I'm just sort of the guy holding the stick, kind of making demands on my team. But Sergeant Colaretti, Officer Baker, Officer Alami, and Officer Alpert spent countless hours trying to drive this and get us to where we want to be, and they are absolutely 100% moving in the right direction.
Very good. Sounds like a lot of new people coming on board.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you deal with that in order to be able to make sure that we're not sacrificing our, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of opening positions, but still, you know, to make sure that they're going to be up and ready, especially if you're going to be talking about streamlining your, you know, your coming onboard, onboarding.
The, I'm sorry, how are we adjusting to the volume of the people?
Well, I mean, when you're bringing in a large number of new, you know, officers at all at one time, how do you deal with that and not sacrifice the safety that people are expecting?
Sure. We have a field training program, and we anticipated this volume increase. We've sent additional officers to the FTO Field Training Program, and we are ready for them. So as the officers unload, get out of school, if you will, we are 100% ready to facilitate and fill those positions. Doesn't change anything with regards to staffing on the road or police officers responding to calls. Instead of the one officer responding to the call, it'll be the officer and the trainee responding to calls. So we have a very, very robust group, ready and willing and waiting for the next group to come through. Unfortunately, I inherited this, but no excuses. It is what it is. We are definitely moving forward. We are moving 100% in the right direction. If not my top priority, it was definitely the top two. I don't want to hear it's a national problem anymore, because when you get done telling me that, what are we doing about it?
Right.
So I made it sort of a personal issue with me when I came in, and moving this department in the right direction, we definitely need to fill these positions, and we are doing so. So I'm very, very confident, happy we're going to be able to meet the criteria.
And I wanted to say a kudo to you in your response to the different inquiries that are coming through to me that I'm sharing with you and the city manager, and your response to them, specific to whatever their issues are, whether it's speeding over the Atlantic Boulevard Bridge or other issues. So I just want to say thank you very much for being as responsive as you've been. I have not experienced that, and I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
Sure, thanks. Okay, so I mean, I'm assuming we increased the pay and we increased the multiplier, so that should be attractive to people. So we're getting good applicants and a lot of applicants? Are you seeing an increase in the application process?
Yes.
Okay.
I will tell you that people go online. Everybody's very computer savvy, so that online application was key. Obviously, getting out there and meeting people when we go to the schools and the job training, the job seminars, if you will, that's one, that's one level, one aspect. We needed to kind of change the way we do business, make people feel like we need you, we want to connect with people. It's personality, it's how you deal with people. But the online process, to answer your question, it spelled it out. We had so much to offer, we just weren't explaining it well in the application process.
Right.
And when I went in there and looked at it, I was like, God, we offer so much more. We need to make, we need to fix this and make it better. Once we did that, we made it more attractive. We were getting a ton of applications, by the hundreds.
Well, thank you for recognizing that and fixing that problem. And you talked about reducing down the process. Can you just elaborate slightly more on that? So you're making the hiring process a two-month versus a three-month process. It's concerning a little when you talk about that, because I want to make sure we're getting the best applicants.
We do not reduce the qualifications by any means. What I mean by that, and I'm glad you asked that question, we want to expedite, meaning we want to make up for any loose, loose time that we have. There's no like, oh, we'll call tomorrow, we'll set up a doctor's appointment a week from now, we'll set the polygraph up, you know, kind of laissez-faire. This is, this is, we need-
You're speeding it up, but not taking away any aspect.
Correct. We're very judicious and we're very detailed in the way we do it. I am not lowering standards to fill a hole or fill a void. It's very, very competitive. If you can shave a couple days off the process and still being thorough and detailed, we need to do that, because there are a lot of hungry agencies out there going to just, we missed one, it was the same day. We were prepared to offer employment to this officer, and she ended up taking it from somebody else who called the day before we did. So it is that competitive, but we understand that. So we just need to kind of get off our laurels and say, oh, it's Friday, we'll call on Monday. No, you'll call Friday, you'll call Saturday. It doesn't matter. We need to move on this. So not jeopardizing any types of level of what we are expecting in our application or our hiring process, just making sure we're moving on point with it and not losing any time.
Right, thank you.
Anything else?
One question. I know, don't know if it's discriminating or anything, and I hope it's not. Do you give any extra, not incentive, but rewards, awards, hiring standard, not standard, credit, credit's the word, to people who might live in Delray?
Not, I wouldn't say credit. I mean, obviously, if you do live in Delray, it's a convenience, but it's based on qualifications in the process. Military personnel will be pushed to the top, veterans preference, we do have that with the city. But with regard to location, I will tell you for selfish reasons, I would love them to be closer and/or live in the city, but it's based on qualifications, and we just try to find the absolute best candidates.
I might want to consider that, because we do have an unemployment problem here in the city, and I don't know that our residents even know that there's this push going on, because till you stood up there, I did not know this, and I live in Delray.
I love the idea of hiring homegrown, because everybody knows everybody. Everybody knows the mother, the father, the sister, the brother. I absolutely am dialed in when they say they live in Delray. But to say, we give it a preference, if you will, it's based on the qualifications.
Have you been going out to our local events, doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The green market.
It's, we made these cards, if you will, these like index cards, and we hand them out. So all the officers have now become sort of advertising for the agency. And I will say this, moving forward, my training unit is kind of dual purpose now. They do all the training for the agency. There's three officers who are doing all this, and I had to tell them, hit the brakes a little bit. Do the mandatory training, but I need recruiting also. So I am really stretching them out, maybe in the future, just as an option, maybe hiring part-time employees to actually fill that void, to do recruiting and hiring full-time all throughout the year. They don't need any benefits. They're part-time, 29 hours or less, maybe three officers, if you will, and it would definitely eliminate this situation that we were in, where we were 17 down, versus just being a handful down and being able to manage it. Just something to think of moving forward.
I don't know if this is something you can consider, if we have any who are going on retirement, if that might be something they'd like to do, they don't really want to leave, they're not going to be on duty, but they're in the recruiting business.
Absolutely. I would love to hire, there's a lot of officers who retire, who all talk about the retirement process, but then when they retire, they don't know what to do with themselves. I would love to reel in the ones that have the personality, the ones that are going to represent us well, and say, here's a part-time job, it's just an hourly job, there's no benefits whatsoever, it's 29 hours a week, and they would be fantastic ambassadors for us in recruiting.
Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. So back to Director of Parks and Recreation, Sam Mietat, concerning the prospect of a bid participation in collaboration with the Palm Beach County Sports Commission relative to the Billie Jean Cup. And in preparation for this dialogue, Mr. Mietat and I did spend a little bit of time to discuss the data analytics as related to this particular consideration. Not only the fact that the City of Delray Beach will be offering this great facility in a Delray Beach Tennis Center, but whatever financial commitment vis-à-vis the anticipated economic impact. So as much as we can possibly articulate what possibilities may exist in those regards, we did try our best to strike a balance in terms of this consideration. So with that, Mr. Mietat, if you would be so kind.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners, Sam Mietat, Director of Parks and Recreation. And as Mr. Moore just kind of outlined, we were approached by the Palm Beach County Sports Commission about the possibility of putting in a bid jointly for the Billie Jean King Cup. If that's a new name, it doesn't sound familiar, it's because it has been rebranded. It's what we formerly known as Fed Cup. As most of you were here in 2019, we put in a very similar bid. Unfortunately, US team didn't make it through the rounds, and we just didn't end up hosting. But what we looked at is the, very similar terms and conditions of the event and our bid process. So we wanted to get your approval to submit a likewise bid this year. We're excited about it. And I'd like to introduce, if we could briefly, Mr. George Lindley from the Palm Beach County Sports Commission, just to talk about the event itself real quick.
Very good.
Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Mayor and City Commissioners. Nice to be in front of you once again in Delray Beach. You truly offer one of the best sport destinations, and tennis in particular, in our state of Florida, being the only, one of only two stops in our entire state that's home to an ATP Tour event, and home to countless USTA sanctioned youth events that create significant economic benefits and overnight accommodations for our entire county. We're really excited about to be here today and to have the conversation in terms of submitting a bid and pursuing the Billie Jean King Cup. As Sam said, this is no stranger to the City of Delray Beach. In 2020, this event was rebranded and named after Billie Jean King, who's a global icon in sports. She's also dedicated her life to fight against discrimination and social injustice. And now, the Federation Cup carries, carries her name, and I think it's a very special alignment. Would be the first time the city would host this event under the new rebrand. But the event is no stranger to the City of Delray Beach. 2005 and 2007, the Federation Cup called the city home, and as well as 2013, with, with two iconic tennis players, Serena and Venus actually participating during the Delray Beach's version of the Federation Cup. And we did, as Sam said, win the bid to host a semifinal match in 2019, but the US national team lost in the quarterfinals. The event was launched in 1963, and it is the premier team competition in women's tennis that's on a global stage. It's one of the largest, what is the largest annual international team competition in tennis. It has 100 nations will vie to be part of the Billie Jean King Cup, the same, same structure as the Federation Cup. And it, they compete, and it gets down to a world group, which is where the Billie Jean King Cup begins, and that's what the City of Delray Beach has hosted in the past, and that we would be looking at hosting this time. It's the eight nations, and then there would be three ties, they call them, to ultimately determine who is the world champion. The competition is owned by the International Tennis Federation. They are the global authority for the sport of tennis. They own and manage this event. They're based in London. But the United States Tennis Association, which is the national governing body for the sport, would be, has been our direct contact, and they manage and oversee participation by the US team, which would be based in Delray if we submit a bid and win the bid. We, as I mentioned, when you look at tennis from a global stage, outside of the Olympics, this truly is the premier competition. It would create an ultimate platform for a city that already does sports so well, and particularly tennis. And it would, from an economic impact perspective and a hotel impact perspective, the event would, would be, would be significant. One of the last American cities to host the event, it was the finals, was Asheville in 2019. Reported from their sports commission was over 5,600 hotel room nights that were generated and $5 million in economic impact. The events, the impacts could vary based on a variety of circumstances, but there's no doubt we would have an influx of visitors from, hopefully across the state, across the nation, and travel groups actually would come in, and travel agencies would build these international groups that would come in and be, and be enjoying some nights and days in the City of Delray Beach. Another major benefit is the media value that comes with hosting a Billie Jean King Cup. And it's expected, it's, all the contracts haven't been signed yet, but for the last 20 years, it has been televised, and so it's expected to be televised live on the tennis channel, which reaches nearly 40 million homes. And in 2013, it was broadcast live in 55 countries, and then the broadcast was redistributed to about 150 nations. So the TV is significant. Also, in today's world, digital is just as powerful as TV, and so the digital means of consumption for this event would be, would almost be, in today's world, it seems like it brings just as significant value as now as the linear TV. The, in the years that we've hosted this event, we have seen significant benefits and, and impact that has hit not only the City of Delray, Delray Beach, but all of Palm Beach County. So we do think this is the, a great opportunity to maximize facility, venue, infrastructure that you have existing here, and being able to create a truly global stage for a sport that is so powerful in not only Palm Beach County, but in the state of Florida. I'll, I will conclude my remarks, but be happy to answer any questions or come back and talk if you need me to address anything else.
George. Sam, you want to?
Yep.
Pass a little bit more information?
Just finishing up real quick, just some, some of the areas of the bid that we're looking, like I said, we're looking at the very similar bid to the 2019 package that was submitted. And that's $150,000 in financial commitment. Palm Beach County Sports Committee and George's group is committed to $75,000. So the city, we're looking at a commitment of $75,000 to match that, to get to the 150, as well as the in-kind things that we mentioned earlier tonight already, but again, in 2019. And those are the things such as stadium and facility rentals, the locker rentals, the fees that we would be waiving for the use of that, as well as some things that we would have to pay for, such as security, and then the in-kind costs like fire, police, staffing, that type of thing, power, lighting. So just outline some of those things there for, for all of us. And it, again, it looks like the very similar 2019, the financial package in the bid comes to almost $490,000. So it's, what we feel is a strong bid would put us in a competitive limelight compared to the other cities that are potentially putting in their bids. Just some additional information that I think is important to note for your discussion or consideration is the possibility of hosting. We feel, in meeting with the Sports, Sports Commission from Palm Beach County, as well as the Billie Jean King Cup organization that came and visited us, that we have a strong possibility. We feel very strong about our position and our bid, and quite frankly, about our city and our facilities. It's hard to determine this next one, but I think it's worth noting that the star power of the American women players right now is through the roof. You know, we can't confirm any of the players at this moment, but it could be cocoa golf. I mean, you know, how lucky would we be? And then another important thing is the availability of budgeted funds. As you can probably imagine, this isn't something we budgeted for. However, uniquely, maybe timing is just perfect, we've received notification from Chris Everett Group that they're not looking to host their event again this year. So the budgeted tennis tournament funds from that is about $79,000, so we think it fits, and it could be moved over for this event, and that, and that way it's not an additional on top of something we're already paying for. It is, if you didn't recognize the date, it is the same weekend as Delray Affair. Speaking to both the Chamber of Commerce and the Delray Affair producers, as well as the Fed Cup group, it's believed that this could be a really great pairing of the two, that both would kind of augment the other from cross-promotion, from people being in town, attending both events. The Billie Jean King Cup has gone to a two-day event instead of a longer three-day event, so it's just Friday and Saturday, where they used to be Friday, Saturday, Sunday. It was a little longer. Just in preliminary talks of logistics, we feel like the Billie Jean King Cup group would come in and do their entire load-in the week prior, so it would be done by the time Delray Affair is even setting up. So we think there's some really strong, really great cross-promotion there, from marketing, billboards, even some of the street closures, things like that. And then some of the members from the chamber and, and other- And then some of the members from the Chamber and, and other groups are here today if, if there's any questions from community support. So with that, I kind of move through it quickly for you, because I know you're also very familiar with this event, more so than I, so I'm a little excited for this event myself for the first time. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
I'm sure you do have some questions, but I have, I have some just right off the bat. There's no question that it would be a great economic impact, and immediate coverage is always great when we're doing these type of, you know, these tournaments. This is a one-time contract, it's annually bid out, is that correct? So we're not committing to this on long-term, it's just this once?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, we can go, we can go next year and so on, we can actually continue to bid it if we want to in the future.
George probably knows more than I do, but I believe if you're committed, if you get one, if you win, it's less likely you would win the following.
Right.
It becomes harder, because they do want to move it around.
I got it, okay. Is there any revenue generating possibilities for the city through parking, sponsorships or vending or any of that, or is this pretty much they're going to be able to capture all of that in their contract?
There is some parking revenue we'd realize from the additional parking and people coming, but there's also some sponsorship opportunities. It's my understanding in the bid package that was offered before, but it was never realized, so I didn't want to include that as something that isn't real in, in this discussion. But there are some sponsorship opportunities that we could be afforded through the process as the host.
And on the closures, the, the street closures with respect to the Delray Affair, do we know where that starts? Is that starting at Swinton and heading east, or is, are we extending down to, you know, further down West on Atlantic?
Further west on Atlantic.
So basically, all in front of the, the tennis center would be all closed off for the Delray Affair, and also if this was to come?
Correct.
I'm going to tell you what you're going to have a real problem with is parking. I mean, because we have such a difficult time just in that one, you know, Delray Affair to park it, that to now expect people to be coming in, not even getting close and trying to find their way to parking, I think that's going to be a real, a real problem. Anyway, I, I'm going to listen to the rest of my colleagues, but that's, that's where I have a little bit of an issue.
If, if I could just respond quickly, we have already spoken then preliminarily, them being the promoters of the Delray Affair, and the fact that we used so much of the tri-rail parking and busing people in, that we would augment on that type of plan. So although the formal parking plan would be in place already in our initial stages, we've, we've already kind of worked on that, because we know that's going to be one of the, one of the bigger key points.
Okay.
Commissioner Johnson? I'll start. Would you be kind enough to tell us, for those of us who are not aware, who don't attend because of the traffic, Delray Affair weekend is?
The 14th and the 16th.
Okay, of?
April.
April.
Okay, thank you.
That it?
That's all.
Okay.
Oh, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity to utilize the tennis center rather than just those things that you've brought before us before. It's a tennis center, we'd like to see as much tennis as possible. Thank you.
Commissioner Boston?
I think this is one of those opportunities that you put in for and you figure it out. But obviously, we need to ensure that staff is on board, right? Seems like you guys are, you've had conversations with our, with our partners, and, you know, I'll be, I'll be rooting, I'll be tuning into tennis and rooting for, for Delray Beach or the US, I should say.
Very good. Vice Mayor?
Sure. I, I mean, I love the idea. I can't believe it was 2013 that Mr. Barzinski was in your spot, making the pitch to do this. It, it's crazy that it was that long ago. I work with George in my role as a member of the Palm Beach County Tours Development Council, and he does an amazing job throughout our county, him and his team with the Sports Commission, and does a wonderful presentation about sports tourism and economically, what it does for cities, heads and beds and whatnot. I know he does a presentation, if we would want to hear it in the future, he did it, I know in Wellington and a couple other cities throughout the county. But the economic impact from those staying in our hotels at, towards the end of season, dining at our restaurants, shopping at our, our stores, I think would certainly see a great impact. I'm glad you brought up the, the state of women's, Americans' women's tennis. It's higher than it has been in a long time. And one thing that I noticed that we've had in the last year at the Delray Beach Open is we had the mixed doubles match with the Fernandez sisters last year, a local tennis phenom played the year before. The crowds love, in this city and throughout our community, watching women play tennis. And to have the potential star power, I think is, be second to none. So I certainly would support this proposal. Thank you.
Deputy Vice Mayor?
You all know I'm in support. Go through that saying. I love tennis, but I've also attended some of these events, they're very dynamic, people come from all over. I share the mayor's concerns, however, I think perhaps you should contemplate making the Delray Affair, you know, end, and perhaps going off the side streets, because I, I'm concerned with even people in hotels getting to the location. The idea is for it to be amazing and fun, but also not so inconvenient for people that it ends up being something that doesn't turn out to be as great as we expected. We would be remiss if we didn't point out the two people running the tennis center, Jeff Bingo, best tennis pro in the United States, and Sharon Painter, and I want to say that, yeah. So no, for those of you who play tennis, our tennis, Jeff has been, you know, redoing all of our courts, and they are amazing. The tennis center is fabulous, I've been playing since '05, it's never been so well-managed, and I appreciate both of you.
Sure.
I'm on board.
And I think my colleague's concerns about the crowds are valid, but, you know, the Delray Affair is what, 10 to 5, 10 to 6? What time would the matches start? Maybe they'd be night matches, you never know. Obviously, that would, that's further down the road, but certainly something to think about.
But also, though, the people come in and they park, right? They unload, and then they go off to a location and park. It's, it, we're, it's going to require some strategic thinking, but I'll rely on you.
Yeah, and I, I totally agree. I mean, I'm, I'm definitely down for it, except for the fact that there's the parking issue, and I think that we should probably think about, you know, where the, if we do get the bid, where the Delray Affair, and this would be Mr. Moore's responsibility with whomever else in the city, where the Delray Beach, Delray Affair begins and ends. And I think that that could make a difference, because again, it's just going to be trying to get these cars to where they're coming, because they're all coming, they would be coming, you know, and we know that they're coming for the affair, but they're also going to be coming for us now. So it really complicates matters. And don't be shy about reaching out to the county and asking, hey, during this weekend, can we borrow that garage of yours?
Yeah.
In order to be able to increase the number of parking, in a real, very, very strategic location to the tennis center, and maybe make that just the tennis people, that they have the tickets to get in. That would be a way to be able to maybe manage some of that, that vehicle traffic.
Great idea.
In addition to, we might not have anything going yet, would love to see it, but we will have 6, 7, 800 block available for parking.
Oh, that's true, too. We could possibly use, we could, we could probably somehow work, park that if we're not taking that, that affair down into that western area. All right, so I think you've got your consensus to move forward.
Thank you very much.
We need a motion, Mayor. Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to submit a bid.
Second.
Call the roll. Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes, good luck.
Go get them.
Thank you.
Get it. All right, moving on to the, I'm sorry, we have time now for the public to make comments. Mr. Moore, you're finished, correct?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, very good. So to the public, we now have an opportunity for, for anybody who would like to speak to the public, in the public, this is the, the meeting is open to you, for anyone wishing to speak on any agenda item that is a non-quasi-judicial and a non-public hearing item. Public hearing and quasi-judicial items will be opened up later in the meeting. You have, please sign in, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Yes, ma'am. And if anybody else wants to speak, just kind of queue up behind, it makes it easier than for us to wait in between.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon, yes. I'm sorry.
This evening.
I see the sun and it's morning to me. Okay. I am here to thank you all for a lot of different things.
Your name and address.
Oh, Bearwoodson, 1885 Palm Cove Boulevard. I'll be going to the HOA meeting tonight, they're not ready. I wanted to come in because I have been busy, just as you all have, because a lot of this has to do with seeing you where I've been. The first thing is, thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, Cassell, for coming up and supporting the tree planting. That day that I saw you out there, all the kids were happy. I planted three trees by myself, you all saw that, sweating like I couldn't even believe. But thank you also for the grant to help support putting trees in our city. I think it's very important, especially to make sure that we have a canopy of shade for the growth and development of other plants in the ecosystem. The mid-November painting of Libby, Mr. Moore, thank you so much for reaching out and telling me that that was going to happen. I have forwarded it over to some of the members who are in the southwest area and northwest area to let them know that this is going to take place. They are excited as well. Thank you to Commissioner Johnson for putting forth that EJS will be able to stay in their location during the transition of Mr. Hatcher and his development firm, so that the kids will have a safe place to engage and to strategize for helping to support the city as well. I wanted to also let you know that it is confirmed that my little adopted classroom, Carver Middle School Choir, will be singing on December 3rd with the Toys for Tots program that we have in store for everyone in the city at the Libby Amphitheater. And I also had to say this before I run out of time, I am all in support of the Billie Jean King Cup. She and I attended the same high school, Long Beach Poly, we're both from the same city, home of scholars and champions, go Jackrabbits till the day we die. I just wanted to let you all know that, and we've put the most NFL players in the NFL as well, as well as Snoop Dogg and Cameron Diaz also attended. So yes, I'm not a celebrity yet, but anyway, but I'm in good company. But I wanted to thank you all for all the work you've been doing. I've been all over, just as you have, and this has been great. Also, Commissioner Johnson, with the movie premiere that we have yet to attend, that has also been her working diligently to keep revenue in this city with that organization. It was a tough go, we're still in Delray, it's not downtown, but it's still here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. How are you this afternoon?
Doing great.
Hi, I'm Joy Howell, and I live at 25 Northwest 24th Court, and I'm here just to, I guess, reiterate support for the green building ordinance that you're taking up today. I sent you all an email, but is that quasi-judicial?
It's actually, it's a public hearing, it's second reading, so you're going to have to wait for, to make your comments later.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Michael Wendt, 1540 18th Avenue. I want to thank you all. I learned how to run the city by watching you all. You did phenomenal job, phenomenal. You built more than all these people together. All these, all these mayors, you build more than all of them together. Now it's a real city. Used to be building here, building there, and more people are coming. I have friends all over the world, they're moving here, even people from Italy are moving here. I can't even believe that somebody would come from Florence to Delray Beach. We must be doing something good. So I'm looking forward to continue your work.
Thank you. You got it. Thank you, Mr. Wendt. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. Laura Simon with the Downtown Development Authority. I just wanted to publicly say thank you to the city staff and city team for their support with our Art and Jazz on the Avenue that took place last Wednesday. It was on the beachside, we had close to 1,500 people, and, you know, prompt setup time from the planning process to setup, to tear down, which started from 2 to 11 PM. That last barricade was pulled, and all right on time, and the team does it with a smile, and I just wanted to publicly say thank, say thank you for that. So we have another one in January, January 25th, it'll be on Second Avenue in Pineapple Grove, and it'll be kicking off, we're doing it with a health and wellness theme around the sports, because February is going to be a theme for us for wellness and all things health and wellness in our community, so celebrating that. But we'll kick it off on January 25th, but lots of things in between, as you know, but we just really appreciate the city's support, our police team, our fire, streets, everybody that does really great work with us, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is James Heilinski, I live at 3557 Lone Pine Road. We are, we're taking up-
That's a, that's a, okay. Quasi-judicial as well. Yeah, this is one of the quasi-judicial meetings, so what we're going to do is we're going to be hitting that pretty close to this time, so you just, we'll bring you up then.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed. Consent agenda approval.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Call the roll, please. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boston?
Yes.
Okay, so we are moving on to our regular agenda. First item is 7A, which is Resolution 59-22, and this is quasi-judicial. So I'm going to read the rules into the record. This hearing shall be conducted in accordance with quasi-judicial rules. The applicant and the city shall be allowed 20 minutes each to present their case. The public shall be allowed to speak for three minutes each or a maximum of six minutes if the person represents an organization or a group of people who are present but agree not to speak. The city, commission, staff, and the applicant may be allowed to cross-examine a witness. The city or the applicant may be allowed to offer rebuttal testimony. The decision to approve or deny an application or appeal may not be legally made upon personal views as to whether a project is a good project or not, nor may decision be based on the number of citizens who support or oppose a particular project. The law requires that all the decisions must be made based on whether or not the project meets the requirements of the law, the comprehensive plan, and the land development regulations. At this point in time, if there's anybody that's going to be speaking to Resolution Number 59-22, please stand, raise your right hand, this would be the appropriate time, gentlemen, sir, and be sworn in.
Raise your right hands, please. By the authority vested in me as the notary of the state of Florida, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do.
Okay, so when you are coming forward to speak, you'll let everybody know that you are sworn in, and with your name and address. At this point, we're going to talk about the disclosure of ex parte communication, starting with Deputy Vice Mayor. Non.
Anything that's on the server, obviously.
Server.
Yes, same server here, and we also received some documents up on our dais.
Okay, server, documents.
Same, okay, very good. So at this point in time, we're going to have the staff go ahead and enter the project file into the record.
Good evening, Anthea Geniotis, Development Services Director, and I'd like to enter File 2021-128 ABR into the record, and the applicant would go first and do presentation.
Very good. Good afternoon.
Thank you for having us today. I'm going to try to be as brief as I can.
Start with your name, if you-
Yes, my name is Ryan Abrams, thank you. I'm, I'm the attorney for the applicant regarding the abandonment request. We have a brief presentation I'll be going through today. I also swore myself in as a-
And address, please.
Yes, 888 Southeast 3rd Avenue, Suite 400, Fort Lauderdale, Florida.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay, so we are seeking abandonment of an 80, of a right-of-way adjacent to my client's property, which is at the terminus of Davis Road. This is a public right-of-way that was historically deeded, I think initially to the county, and that was annexed, part of it was annexed by Delray later on. The property was deeded specifically for public roadway use. The portion that we are seeking abandonment of today is a 55-foot wide portion, it's not the entire portion, so would leave room for public access, and that was specifically meant to address comments from the Planning and Zoning Board. It is also an unpaved portion, it was never maintained as a road, so it was not even used for the purpose for which it was dedicated. It is, east of the property is a HOA community, a single-family HOA community. To the north is the Lake Worth Drainage District, L-30, L-30 Canal. And of course, to the west, immediately adjacent is my client's property, a single-family home. The zoning for this property is rural residential, minimum lot size is two acres, this would fit within the minimum lot size, so there would not be additional development on this on this site. Oh. Okay, so, the main concern and the reason that this abandonment is sought is because this is the only property on this, on this area, which is Lone Pine Road, which has a right-of-way next to it that gives access to anyone from the public to walk back to the canal. Presents a security issue and concern, as well as privacy concern for my client. The property is currently only maintained and historically has been maintained only by the owner of the property owned by my client. And it's really the only access point for the driveway that's connected to the property. This is one view of an aerial which just shows an overlay of the abandonment that's being proposed. B is not to scale, but it shows generally what the abandoned area is. You'll see that there is a circular driveway connecting to the terminus of Davis Road. That circular driveway has been there for many years now. On aerials on the property praiser, you can find it as far back as 2007. So, it's historically been used and maintained as part of the property. It is only now that we are seeking to make it official. Of course, this is a hearing in which we know that there's certain criteria in the code to meet. We believe all the criteria is satisfied, and I just would ask the commission to, you know, pay heed to the advice of staff, specifically the city engineer, which issued a report and recommendation finding that all the elements in the code are satisfied, the comprehensive plan is satisfied, recommending approval because of no public use of this property. Specifically, the elements of the code are, first, no need for the use of the right-of-way. And this is a quote from the, from the report, cover letter for the agenda item today. It says, "The city has no need now nor in the future for this specific area of right-of-way." As to the second element, abandonment does not prevent access to a lot of record. Again, a quote from the application materials by the city, would not prevent access to a lot of record, as the property adjacent will be received, receiving the land and the access to the community is already provided from Lone Pine Road. And the final element is that the abandonment will not result in any detriment. And of course, at the P&amp;Z meeting when we were seeking initially an 80-foot abandonment, we paid close attention to the comments from the public, from Planning and Zoning Board. There was concern that some people in the community like to go back there and fish and stuff, and we understand that. So, 25 feet was a significant concession that allows for that to continue. Public access will not be hindered in any way. There were some comments from the public, concern about trees that are in the way. That's not a hindrance. The city owns the property. They can remove trees as they see fit. There were some other comments from the public about the sloping of that area. There is no sloping. That was, I believe, some confusion. The sloping that exists is on a separate 25-foot wide buffer that belongs to the HOA adjacent to it. There won't be any hindrance to a public access. It's also consistent with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan specifically authorizes abandonment requests as long as it does satisfy the public use requirement, meaning that there will be no expected public use. That's something the city is not even arguing here. There's simply no known public use, no expected public use. Again, the only reason this property was dedicated was for roadway use, never was used as a road, and there's no reason to use it as a road, as the only thing there is the L-30 Canal. I also want to bring up another thing. I think it's important to recognize that the only reason to go back there is possibly to do some fishing and other recreational activities. There's no ability for the public to use that area for roadway, you know, for vehicle access. I think there was some comments from the public, and specifically a letter, that referred to it not being wide enough for vehicles. The thing is, there's no ability to go back there without a permit from Lake Worth Drainage District. So, vehicular access should not be concerned, and the Lake Worth Drainage District specifically commented that they don't object. This is the initial proposal to the left, which proposed 80 feet would have covered the entire area. Again, the entire area was historically used and maintained by the owner of the property. However, we scaled that back significantly to just 55 feet, leaving a 25-foot public right-of-way unaffected. So, that's all I have for today. I would just, again, ask that the commission pay close attention to what staff recommended, and specifically the city engineer. And if there's any questions, happy to take them. Anything I can answer at all?
We'll ask.
Okay.
We're gonna let the city staff go ahead and do their report first.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so, I'm going to go over the, what's in front of you now and make sure that everyone understands how it's changed between Planning and Zoning Board now and the findings that you actually have to make to make the decision. So, ultimately, there is an 80-foot unapproved right-of-way that connects Davis Road to the Lake Worth Drainage District Canal. I think it's important to note that the right-of-way has provided access for passive recreation. Lake Worth Drainage District doesn't have a problem with anybody walking on their access. However, motorized vehicles have never been permitted beyond clearly what is an access to the house on the adjacent, adjacent to the area. So, when this went to Planning and Zoning Board, the full 80 feet was the request. The request in front of you is for 55 feet, which leaves 25 feet next to the buffer. How did the dedication happen in the first place? This happened through the right-of-way deeds back in the late 50s. The dedication is a right-of-way easement, and it says, "For the lands for a public highway purpose." I don't know if we were gonna drive into the canal, or if that was a terminology we used back then for roads or streets, but in terms of what our LDRs say now is that a public right-of-way, not specifying that it's a highway, any public right-of-way, may not be abandoned, or may be abandoned, in which case it's returned to the adjacent property. And as usually you see that about the center line of the property, in this case, the way it was plotted, it would go, it would go back to this parcel. So, again, Davis Road is here, and then it turns into, it intersects with Lone Pine Road. The proposed abandonment area is in red. So, I know there was some discussion about slope, not slope. This part is the buffer, the area defined by the two green lines is the buffer, the adjacent HOA. You're gonna see that there's an adjacent 25 feet next to it that would be offered for public access, and also in response to Lake Worth Drainage District's initial concerns about an easement, ensuring that they had access to maintain the canal as well. So, again, the basis of the request is to restrict or better control access to the private So, this is what's attached to your resolution. It shows that the, that 55 feet would go and be joined to the lot, and then this is the 25 feet that would remain as right-of-way, not as an easement to Lake Worth Drainage District, but it would be retained as right-of-way serving both those purposes. Ultimately, the findings that the commission has to use to make a decision whether or not to abandon this partial amount or not is that there is not, nor will there be, a need for the use of the right-of-way for any public purpose, that the abandonment does not, nor will not, prevent access to a lot of record, and that's, that one's not really applicable in this case, and that the abandonment will not result in a detriment to the provision of access and/or of utility services to the adjacent properties of the general area. In this case, that, you know, we had to work with our adjacent, our partner agency with Lake Worth Drainage District, that was the most significant utility that needs. There's a certain amount of equipment they use periodically to service that, and so revised with meets their requirement. The process does require that the city engineer review the request and make a recommendation of approval. The letter is attached to this package. There are a number of LDR, comprehensive plan policies related to right-of-way abandonment, and it still goes back to that, is there any way that we're gonna need that area for a public purpose, whether it's utilities, whether it's access, whether it's bike, ped, car access, something like that. And that, you know, the goal is basically to create and enhance a interconnected network over time in the city, throughout the city, including links to potential bike, ped networks. Planning Board on May 16th heard the initial request, which was the full abandonment, and recommended denial. There was a lot of board discussion, in case you didn't get to watch the meeting, regarding that they were not supportive of the full right-of-way abandonment without retaining some access specifically for passive recreation. So, beyond Lake Worth Drainage District's necessity, the planning board was concerned about public access as well, bike, ped, not necessarily motorized vehicles, but, and that also, like what happens if there is any reason for PD or fire to need access to the canal, that we need to maintain, you know, that cut-through spot there. The board was supportive of retaining half of the, not 25, not, you know, 25 feet, but actually half of the access, ensuring that Lake Worth Drainage District had a similar, but, you know, smaller need, but that really just, here's your half of the right-of-way, but we're gonna keep the other half for public process. That was part of their discussion. And then you do have an updated letter from the district in the package, speaking to their, their needs being met under the new proposal. And, and then, of course, again, that they are supportive of retaining access for the adjacent residents. There was a lot of discussion from the public. I'm sure you're gonna hear some of that now. So, ultimately, what's before you for that first finding is considerations for the public right-of-way in terms of how much of this path, all, some, or none, is necessary to meet the needs of the city at large, not necessarily just Hassan's utility crew. You know, it's really the city as a whole and those access issues. So, I'm here if you have any questions, and you actually are entitled to rebuttal or cross as part of this process if you don't like something.
After, after public comment.
Yep, just a second.
He needs to be buried in there.
You might wanna come closer, just so you, you, I'm sorry, Mr. Abrams, you can come closer.
Sure.
And then, right now, what we're gonna do is open it up to anybody who would like to speak on this subject. You're welcome to come forward, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
And please state whether or not you've been sworn in.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Whether or not they've been sworn in.
Yes, please indicate that you were sworn in after you-
I've been sworn in.
Okay.
Jim Hylinski, 3557 Lone Pine Road. The property immediately next door to their property, the people seeking abandonment. I've lived there for 30 years. The gentleman down the street, Jerry Kern, has been there for 60-some years. It was his corporation that I believe donated that property to the county, which then got turned over to the city. Everybody has been using that property, you know, to get to the Lake Worth, you know, to go fishing and so on and so forth. Just this past couple weeks, we have, as you know, have you guys been out to the site? Anybody see it, or? It's, it's a private road that's very small, and we have no fire hydrants. We are the only road in Delray Beach that does not have fire hydrants on our road. We do not have city water or sewer. So, anybody a little further on down the line that may have a fire in their house, they're probably gonna have to grab something from the canal. We've had SWAT trucks go down the canal, apprehending a suspect down there. Has to be immediate, has to be plenty of room. For the last couple weeks, we've had semi-trailers dropping off. We had a guy build a pool. We had a guy put in pavers. I'm actually doing that around my house now. And they have semis that have no way of turning around anywhere. These semis can back into that property and then head down Davis Road. So, it makes it very convenient for, you know, to have that. Also, at the very end of that, when you come down Davis and make the left, there's a circle there where we have a lot of people going down that road that go in, go down there by mistake, and then they have to turn around. So, they're either gonna have to get on Lone Pine Road, which is private, and turn around in somebody's driveway, or they're gonna do it right there. Hopefully, they do it right there. So, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of different reasons why we like to keep the public access. We haven't had that much time to prepare any kind of, you know, rebuttal against all these, you know, forms and letters and all this stuff, because we just found out about all this stuff at the last minute. So, just in talking to our neighbors, and we're not trying to sway anybody one way or the other, but most of the people wanted to remain as-is. I even thought maybe a good idea would be we put in a community park down there, and everybody get together, homeowners association, put a park, we can all go down there. I mean, I think that would be a great way to use that property. They certainly have every, there are acre lots right there.
Yeah, your time's up, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Three minutes, thank you.
Would it be possible for us to have the property shown rather than this?
Sure, I can move it over.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else wanting to speak? Yes, ma'am. Come on up. And just give a break here so we can go ahead and let her put this up.
Okay.
You can see the property. There you go.
Thank you.
All right.
I think it'd be better if I get one that's a little more context. Hang on. That was a good one. That one?
The big one down.
Yeah, it's got the three.
The overhead view.
Yep, we see it.
Thank you.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Can I speak for?
No, sorry.
My name's Kathy Hylinski. I've been sworn in. That's my husband. Am I allowed to still speak? Okay, another three minutes. I have to disagree with there's no slope. There is a slope on the property, 80 feet on the right-hand side along a fence that runs the entire span of north-south. The only way to get onto this property, the right-of-way, the city-owned right-of-way, is within 55 feet from the eastern side, with 25 feet on the western side addition to the applicant's property. The only opening is at that 55-foot mark, again, from the east to the west, the left side of that opening, with a ton of vegetation all around it, to then access that easement. And vehicles are allowed on the Lake Worth Drainage District property with permits. And like my husband said, we've had several semi-tractor trailers back out down Lone Pine Road, back into the city-owned right-of-way to then safely exit. Nobody wants any one of these trucks driving on the property with septic tanks, sewage systems, not sewage system, but, I can't think of, the system, the drainage fields on our properties. Every owner owns to the middle of the road. Like you said, Jerry Kern's, his company donated this property. This was not his intention for then it would be gifted to the adjacent homeowner. Again, there is a slope, a ton of vegetation all across the, at least 25 feet of the east, from the east side. Trees, a gate with, or a fence with no gate. There is no access to go through. If you look at the property straight through, tree after tree after tree, large trees, vegetation, the, there's been private property signs. You've all hopefully read our letter, our group letter. The applicants unfortunately discourage people by videotaping them, telling them it was their property, putting up private property signs, discouraging the public as well as the neighbors to go there. Everyone's had the right to fish. People walk behind our house, other people. People have actually said to me, "I'm sorry, I'm making your dog bark." I'm like, "You're allowed to be back there." You know, it's public property. Lake Worth Drainage allows this use in a recreational way. Vegetation, emergency use, a fire truck? So, 25 feet, is that gonna be maintained? That's gonna be Lake Worth Drainage. Are they gonna go cut down the trees? The city wouldn't be responsible for maybe that if there's only 25 feet and an emergency vehicle cannot go through. Will Lake Worth Drainage do it in one year, five years, one month? What if the emergency is tomorrow? Right now, they can get through if we had that current road there, if that was still there, to be able to access in the case of an emergency, or with a permit to go back there. Other people, yes, have driven back there when they shouldn't have, including the applicants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
How you doing? My name's Justin Ryan. I am at 3524 Lone Pine Road. I've been sworn in.
Thank you.
I live directly across from the applicants. I see it not hindering any way, shape, or form Lake Worth Drainage District. They actually have gates on each side, on, off of Congress and off of Barwick, which they normally use to access it. I work with them with the utility department. Driving back there, there is no reason for, I see, besides Lake Worth Drainage District, also if it is not a permitted vehicle. Makes no sense. There's nothing back there for anybody. I see it more so as a liability for the city, just having a street end at a canal where there's no traffic controls, there's no lighting there, there's no indication that there is even an ending there, no guardrail, no reflectors, no nothing. So, could be a liability for somebody thinking it's a road and just cruise off the edge there. The 25-foot easement for the retention of route, more than enough for a fire truck, more than enough for any vehicle. I believe the lanes of the roads are only 80. more than enough for any vehicle. I believe the lanes of the roads are only eight or so foot wide, maybe call it ten foot. That leaves enough room for a two-way road if need be, if you ever wanted to put one there in the future as well. Look at it as adding security, safety, and removing liability and, and any kind of responsibility from the city. If it was gifted to them, it would then all fall onto their plate. That's just my opinion on it. Most of the people complaining I see about it normally aren't using it personally. They just don't want to see somebody else get something for free, I believe. Other than that, some of the other people who are complaining about it live on the opposite side of the street, as myself. Has no impact on me, what happens with it. I think it's just a waste of time, and I feel it should be deeded over to them, and it removes maintenance from you guys or anything from you guys. You just, it's never been used by Delray in the past X amount of years. Who cares? Get rid of the damn thing. That's all I got to say.
Anyone else?
My name's May Shoemaker. I've been swearing, and I live in Lone Pine. I am the person that lived that beautiful residence. I am upset, very upset about it. You know why? Because it's nature behind that. Something that you might sit here and not see. I have the privilege to protect them. And when people wants to drive there, every day I see the birds that is being impacted by. I love animals. It's something that it doesn't show on that picture. We have Canadian geese that migrate back there. If we become a driveway like the Rosenskis want to be, it will be very impact on it. You know why? Because the road will have corrosion, and that is not allowed to. They're all upset about this. I am too because they have big tractor-trailers delivered to their business at their house that back it out and break the sea grape. And if you see to the left, we have a silk tree that is protected by Florida nature, environmental. And on the right of that is a tamarind tree that is also protected. On my property, we have more protected trees than anybody on the street, and I know that because they are all in fruit prints. Okay? Do you think that I want some big trailer to back it up and break that tree? You know, I can show you guys, if you don't know what silk tree is, you might see one because it's one on Lake Ida. It's pink. It's beautiful. I look at her every day. And my silk tree haven't bloomed yet, but the day that she will bloom, you will have the privilege to see that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one. Comments section is closed. We're going back to rebuttal testimony and if you have any.
I just have a few comments, just to clear a few things up. It was mentioned by one of the comments, somebody who commented that this would be a gift. That's, that's not true. Legally, it's not true. The original deed that sent, that gave this property away, it was for, it was a dedication for public roadway use. If it's no longer used for that purpose, it reverts back to the, the grantor. And in this case, that, that falls on the successor in interest, and in this case, the successor in interest is my client. So by law, they have a right over virginal interest in that property. It's not a gift. It's also not free, as was, as was something that was brought up, because this is going to be eleven thousand-plus square feet that's going to be taxable. Currently, it's not taxable. I would think property that's currently not being used, and as the city has stated, there's no, there's no known or intended public use of this property, there should at least be some taxable income that can be derived from it. And I think that's something that everybody can agree on. As for the fire department and any kind of fire safety issue, this, this application went through a rigorous process. It went through two processes, actually. The first time was before I got involved, and we had to go through another round when we changed the proposal. And in neither round did the fire department give any comment, negative comment about, about this proposal, and it does go to their review. The twenty-five feet, it's, it's not an easement. It's a, it would just be a public right-of-way, and it, and it is sufficient. If any truck needs to back into it to turn around, there's been no, you know, competent substantial evidence to show that you couldn't back into there and, and get out the other way. Twenty-five feet should be sufficient. And as far as foliage that might be in the way, that can be removed. And if there's any questions that I can clear up, you know, please, anybody let me know.
Well.
Thank you.
Staff, if there's any cross or rebuttal testimony?
So I, I did want to acknowledge a couple of comments that were made. One is, I do stand corrected, Lake Worth Drainage District does allow you to access using a motorized vehicle with a special permit. It doesn't happen often, and I don't know, but, but she was accurate with that information, for sure. And I took another note. I do think it is relevant that the, the actual Lone Pine Road that all of these houses face is a private road. It's not showing platted or indicated there. And then the gentleman made a comment about improving the area, and I was looking through the parks and recreation element, and we do have policy OPR 3.2.4, which says, maintain public rights-of-way that provide view corridors or vistas to water bodies. And whenever possible, provide features such as benches, landscaping, trash receptacles to enhance the areas as parker parks. We've used that, I think typically, we've executed that more along the intercoastal, but I thought it was important to bring it up. And I think the question is not, of course, not to get, you know, to abandon all of it, but whether leaving twenty-five feet is sufficient for those purposes. That's, that's all I had to offer.
All right, so very good. At this point in time, we're going to go to the, to the board for discussion. I, I have a couple of questions that just, if you could, Anthea, just answer for me, and maybe it'll answer some of the questions that my colleagues have. The, there's twenty-five feet on the right-hand side, or there's, there's an actual easement, I understand. Then you have the eighty-foot-wide section that we've got tapped out.
Yes.
There seems to be a little bit, is this the, there we go. So, so that was the original?
So this is the buffer.
Mm-hmm, that's the eighty-foot, and then there's a twenty-five.
And, and now there's eighty feet, and the proposal, I'm just trying to figure out if I have the, what's the best graphic that shows it?
I think that that, that shows it.
Maybe this one, so.
Well, this one, this one doesn't, because this one is the newer ask, which is less than the eighty, it's the sixty-foot or whatever it was that they asked for.
It was, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way. The initial request was full abandonment.
Right, and then this new one that you just went to?
Here's the, here's the existing condition. Here's the private property in red. Here's the city right-of-way, and then there is a platted landscape buffer that is, I guess, part of that HOA.
We're not even talking about that.
No, no. So the, the proposal is to put the twenty-five-foot walking Lake Worth Drainage public right-of-way. I mean, to be fair, to not abandon twenty-five feet. So this is, so here's the adjacent buffer here. Here is what would be remaining of the public right-of-way to the canal, and this is the part that would become part of the adjacent property through abandonment.
So, so the question that I have is that, you know, there are trees, obviously, I saw in the overview, all the way down on that right-hand side, and it looks like it's all the way to about midpoint of that opening, if you can understand what I'm asking. See?
I'm going to go back to the picture, just.
Go to the picture.
Sorry. So the trees that are here, and are they part of the landscape buffer?
Well, I mean, I just don't see anybody accessing through those trees unless the city comes in and starts taking them down, and, and that's not necessarily what I think should happen there. So it would all, all of a sudden become our responsibility, I'm sure, to ga, ga, give access of which we already have. Does that make sense?
I think I know what you're saying, so that.
See the entrance? The entrance there is like trees on both sides, and that is midpoint. That's not, it might even be a little bit evened over to the left. So it's not like that, that, that would be the access point. That would be the off-limits point. You'd have to be to the right of that if we're going to be giving away, which means that now all of a sudden, we don't have access.
So the concern is, and I don't know if the applicant can speak to it, or, but that the trees that are here basically would block or take up the remaining twenty-five feet. And actually, I can't speak to that. I'll start looking through the.
Well, I don't need, I'm just looking at this from the standpoint, is, is that correct? That's a correct statement or not a correct statement? You can answer that if you want to.
There are currently trees in the twenty-five-foot area. That's correct.
Okay, great. And how long has this person who's living here been, been at this residence? Do we know?
Approximately four years.
Okay. And so this, this driveway, because I'm noticing from the, if I look from the bird's-eye view, the entrance, there is a driveway that looks like it's almost been abandoned, okay, in the front. It looks like a U-shaped driveway that had a, something leading up to the house. Because I don't think that this was the original driveway. It couldn't have been because it's not owned by that prop, property. And it's also just a gravel driveway, if you will. So it's not a permanent driveway. So, you know, it looks to me like this has been changed to accommodate this larger, you, you know, ring-shaped driveway to the house versus that driveway in the very front that looks like it might be maybe abandoned or not being used like the driveway over to the right. Am I correct on that?
At some point in time, you might be correct about that, but I'm not sure. And what I can say is that if you go on the property praiser aerial web, you know, property praiser GIS maps, you can like select on the layer sheet different dates of different aerials that were taken each year back to 2007. And if you look all the way back to 2007, it's been exactly like that, long before my client purchased the property.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then there was the question, or there was something that you had addressed at the very, very beginning that basically stated that you, that your clients were looking to take this property over, but leave, you know, but there would be access anyway. What was the purpose, again, just because of the fact that there is not a road there? Is that?
The purpose was because at the planning and zoning meeting, there was, there was, and tonight, tonight as well, there was concern expressed by some in the community about still wanting to have some ability to, to go back to the canal.
Right. But the original reason was, is that you didn't want the access, but you're giving access anyway. So in other words, it's not like there is a situation here where you're going to be abandoning anybody accessing the property. The property is still going to be accessed as long as they can get by those trees. So it's really just giving over property. That's, that's what we're really looking at.
Well.
Property which is already being used.
Well, it's, it's, it's property that is not being used.
No, 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 used by your, your applicant.
Oh.
Your client.
Correct, because it's not, yes. And I would, I would, just regarding the, the parameters of that use, I think it's important to just remember what the deed says. It's just public roadway. We're not talking about a park. If a park were, if it were used as a park, it would violate the, the terms of the original deed.
Then I'm seeing pictures that basically say private drive, you know, do not enter. That's been posted as well. So it's interesting because this is public property, and somebody's got private, you know, drive, and this is our driveway. I have to tell you, I just personally, it's, it's not, this, this to me, there is, there is use of it right now. I mean, obviously, the homeowner herself came up here and said that there are big, large trucks that back out. How would you like them back out, you know, where you are? But basically, that's happening. It's being used. And it has to do with the fact that that's a very, very narrow, small road over there. I've been down it many times. I have friends who live down there. So I don't, I'm, it's hard for me to make that decision considering we will not be providing access to those, those trucks backing out. The trucks do have to access some of those houses. You are on septic. There are septic tank, tanker trucks that have to come and go. And now what you're basically, your client is asking, or your, you know, the applicant is asking us to do, is to narrow it to a place where nobody can back in and out because of the fact that we've got, you know, a line of trees and whatnot that are going to be stopped.
Well, that test, that testimony regarding trucks backing out was really, I think, limited to semi-trailer, semi-tractor trailer trucks, which are much longer, and, and I think those are not coming through there all the time. But there is a circular driveway at the end of Davis Road that exclude, that is excluded from this area. As you can see from the aerial, it's right, yeah, you can see it from this one right here, the middle bottom. There is that circular ending to, to Davis Road that people used to turn around. And there's really nothing that's going to be affected there.
Thank you. I'm to the, to the rest of the commission. Yes.
Anthea, could I ask you, when the gentleman spoke of the fire department not having any problem with this, can you elaborate on that?
I don't know.
I'm sorry to put you in an awkward position.
I know.
Just wondering if there's, I guess I'm wondering what the review process is. And I ask that because I do remember when the police, so their gates are locked. You can't just, when the police had to come onto the canal, they came through that property because the gates are locked. The police can't call Lake Worth, say, "Come unlock the gate, and then we'll slide in." They were chasing somebody who was driving on the canal.
So, and this, this application has languished a little bit, while I think the applicant has considered planning and zoning boards, you know, input. And so I don't know that Assistant Chief Giacomo was actually on the review when it first came through, but.
Yes, this typically would go to the fire safety division for review. I can't speak as to how that processed through. I can follow up on that, to be sure. I do have experience responding to calls and actually having fires on that road. It is true, there are, there's only one hydrant at the western terminus of the road, and then the other one's further south on Davis. It is a problem for us. We have had to deal with it. We have had to access the canal to obtain water.
Thank you for that information and for that reason alone. Also, I mean, look, I do think our property, it, you know, the part, the aspect of it that related to parks 3.2.4, but the safety alone, that's concerning. So I, I apologize. I won't be supporting this for you.
Thanks, Mayor. No comments, thanks.
Okay.
May I?
Sure, commis, no.
No.
Not unless we're asking. Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. You touched on a few of the, oops, I'm sorry, a few of the questions that I had, and I think I'll ask Anthea. The, the trees that are along the right-hand side that are in the right-of-way, really, who owns, I mean, who planted those? Was this city or the previous owner? Since they've only owned it for four years, and they look rather large, so someone planted those trees?
And there is a landscape buffer adjac, adjacent to this, and it's, you know, things grow, and if it's not maintained, they spread. So I, I don't know that we know. We did the same research, going back through the layers to see, and the driveway and this, well, the, the route was there since 2007. But in terms of how the trees have, long have they been there? Have they always been there? I, I don't know. I do know that in terms of the access for, for fire, you know, twenty-five feet might be okay if there were no trees in it. And so that's where the impediment, you know, the trees are desirable from a park-like setting and all of that, but, you know, to be able to turn around.
Right.
Might need to be a little bit more than twenty-five.
Very good. I'd like to support the boards, and I think the board said no, and then there were alternatives, et cetera. I am not for abandoning property belonging to the city, liability, et cetera. We have liability with all of our property, so that's no reason to abandon it. You answered, we don't know who planted the trees, so they're obviously ours. I'm very concerned that if you just look at the red highlighted area, I don't know, are the property owners who have the property now utilizing this as a driveway? Anthea?
I'm sorry?
Are they utilizing the driveway that's on public property?
I mean, they would have to speak to how they're utilizing it. They're.
It looks like it goes into.
Right, there, here's an access point here.
A garage.
Off of that, there's an access point here and there, so.
So right now, the, the property owners are utilizing city property to access their property. But they don't want anyone else to be able to use the property for leisure. I'm sure a lot of people come back there to fish. I, I don't know what other uses, maybe picnic, I don't know. So for all of the reasons that I've asked, I think public roadway use, this property was purchased four years ago. They knew the situation then that it did not belong to them. When was the last time someone told me in, in passing as I was trying to understand this, that this has come before us before? Was it this owner or the previous owner? Or do we know? It's never come before us?
I didn't find a record, but I've learned that Ms. Johnson tends to be right, so now I have to go.
Do you, do you know that it's come before us?
I have no answer. That's why I was going to ask, Anthea.
I, we don't have a record of the request coming before. They're just the initial request, and there was quite a bit of time between the planning board and, and this hearing while they resurfaced the revised request.
Okay. Well, the fire department, the fire representative, sir, I'm sorry, didn't get your name.
Great, Giacomo.
Yes, we do. Thank you. I, you've been most, it's been most interesting to hear your perspective, even though you were not a part of the review. I'm very curious as to why there was not a, no, we need that access, et cetera. So I thank you for your own personal review. And for that, I will not be in support of this abandonment. Thank you.
Commissioner Boylston?
Yeah, I'm, I'm in line with the P&amp;Z board on this one. I know they looked at the full eighty feet. I don't know if that twenty-five feet makes a, makes a real difference, you know, for, for me. I, it's a little excessive. It's a large piece of property that we have down there, and I could see, you know, a small. It's a large piece of property that we have down there and I could see, you know, a small portion of it if there was a true reason that the applicant is putting forward, but that's not what they're putting forward today. So I, no, I won't, I won't be in favor. I don't, I don't see a, a reason, I don't see that it qualifies.
Anything else? Make a motion?
Motion to deny.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to seven B, appointment to the chair and the vice chair of the Community Redevelopment Agency. Anybody want to put forward a name?
I'd like to move the name Shirley Johnson. She's done a great job as chair.
I'll second for discussion. Why would be in favor of that? One, great job.
Thank you.
But two, what is, what is everyone's thought on? We do, we, we appoint vice mayor and deputy vice mayor and usually after election, right? In, in, in April. What is everyone's thought to revisiting this in April after the election, after seats have swapped? Well, obviously, if we're, if we're moving forward, Ms. Johnson, she won't be here, right?
I agree with you.
Like that is a, the, the reason why the, the vice mayor and deputy vice mayor appointments are made at that time is because the seats just changed. We could be running into this a lot more, something we're not used to in the past model for the CRA. But now that we have moved and the city commission is the CRA, this is going to constantly be, you know, an issue where someone could get appointed and six months later, they might not be there. So I'd be in favor of that appointment and keeping things status quo with maybe even the option of moving it to April, because that seems like a more appropriate place with elected officials sitting on the board.
That's kind of you, thank you.
Not a decision, obviously, that needs to be made tonight, but that makes a lot more sense.
Is that possible with the CRA? I think it's just consistent with our other boards. Typically, our boards are, our appointments are done August, July. Obviously, that board's a little bit different since it's comprised of the five of you.
Right.
So, you know, if it requires a code change, I can do that if that's a consensus. But I think we just typically make all our board, board appointments during that, those summer months so that we can start basically fresh in September after the end of the summer holiday.
Sure. But after four years ago, when it changed from being aligned with those boards, which had residents on them, to being a board that is mainly made up of elected officials, I think this.
That's kind of what I was saying. I mean, I think your board is different because it is comprised of elected officials. And so if you wanted to make that change, I can, if it's in the code, we can make a code ordinance change or you can leave it status quo, whatever, whatever the board's pleasure is.
Okay.
I agree with you on that because, you know, who knows who will be sitting? I know Shirley will be in retirement.
Right, and then following the next year, there's going to be three seats that are changing up and we're just going to continue to run into that problem. It makes a lot more sense. Again, just like why we appoint vice mayor and deputy vice mayor at that time of year.
Any other thoughts?
I'm sorry to say that I'm in favor, not sorry to say that I'm in favor, I'm sorry to say I won't be longer than, but it's, it makes sense.
I think it makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so there was a motion and a second, I believe, to continue and to continue on as it is?
Until April.
So I'm looking at the code, section 32.09, expiration of terms, commencement of terms for the CRA. All appointments expire at 12 o'clock midnight on July 31st, so we're a little late. But, uh, but I'm happy to make another subsection for the CRA, understanding that this should, this issue does exist and you can do your board appointments similar to how we do at our organizational meeting. We could just do it at the organizational meeting.
Exactly.
If that's what you wanted to do.
But the motion is just for Ms. Johnson to continue as chair.
Well, why wouldn't it go into?
Can I amend your, can I amend your motion to include Vice Chair Angie Gray? To keep things status quo? And then we'll revisit this, you know, after the, in our organizational meeting.
I don't know if you have to amend it, but I, we just have to do a second motion, no?
I think you should do separate motions.
Two motions, okay.
Yes, and then if you, if you wanted to write, is there a consensus to make that change, the 32.09, to make the appointments to the CRA consistent with the organizational meeting appointments? It would just be one additional appointment at that meeting.
I'm in favor.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on this. Do we have a, okay, so we have three on the, on the code change?
Yeah, I see two. Mr. Johnson's smiling, but I don't see her nodding.
You know, I, I think I would like to see a change on that, so.
Okay, okay, I'll bring them both for you.
Makes sense, makes sense.
No, I mean, I'm saying I'd like to not pursue the same. I'd like to see if there's a motion for anybody else for the chair, the, the vice chair.
Oh.
Oh, okay, so let's just do those two things first and then we'll have the discussion about the code change. So I think there's a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Johnson as a chair. If you want to just call the roll on that and then we'll do the vice chair.
Call the roll.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
And so now we're at the vice chair, is there any nominations?
I put forward Ms. Gray. Name Ms. Gray, Angie Gray.
I'll second it.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
So I think you've got your, your consensus to, to change this to next, next spring, whatever, to coincide with the.
Organizational meeting.
So, right.
Organizational meeting.
Okay.
In other words, like for instance, we're, we're doing that at that time now.
Yes.
Well, you would have to do it regardless, but going forward, are we going to make that change permanent?
Yes, I think because 2023 and 2024, we're going to have changes in the commission is what I think the mayor is trying to say.
So it would make sense to go ahead and change this to coincide with the organizational meeting so that we're picking the chair and the vice chair at the same time that we're doing the vice mayor and the deputy vice mayor.
And that's going to require a code change, so I will handle that.
Okay, very good. All right, moving on.
Great.
Resolution 179-22.
So this is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, approving the extension of the Delray Beach Community Redevelopment Agency's termination date from September 30th, 2039 to September 16th, 2044, providing an effective date and for other purposes. I believe the reason why this is on our agenda is because the CRA voted to bring this forward. And so I don't, I don't believe this is a public hearing, so if you want to just.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Petolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Boylston?
Yes.
All right, 7D, staff recommends the award of an agreement for B Free.
So just to be clear on this one, Mayor, because I think there was some confusion maybe with the backup. What we're doing today is Ms. Maxfield is going to present the various options to you. If the commission is, is opting to move forward with one of the recommendations, I would just ask for a vote on which recommendation you are selecting with direction to the manager to execute the agreement so that we don't have to keep bringing this back to you.
Good evening, Commission, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm going to move rather quickly through the beginning of this presentation since you saw it on September 19th. Unless anyone has any questions, you can tell me to pause and I, and I will pause. But we are recommending the award of an agreement with B Free LLC for fixed route and point, point transportation services in the estimated amount not to exceed 4.437. That's for a five-year term. I will kind of click through this procurement background since you've all seen this. So some of what you asked of me at the last meeting on the 19th with some ridership data, based on the Tri-Rail ridership and then the Downtown Connect, which is what we had previously before CRA took over the freebie. So you, you have here what the, what our station numbers are for March of 2019, which is the most recent data that's available from Tri-Rail. I provided the on-average daily and off-average daily from the Delray Beach Station as well as the on-monthly and off-monthly. Also did the weekend numbers for you for there. So average daily on the weekday, Monday through Friday, getting on at the Delray Beach Station is 722, getting off is 660. And then on the weekends, on 604 and off on the weekends, 572. Also, the Downtown Connect ridership, as you see there, it's laid out monthly as well as for the year. You can see, it's very small, I realize, at the very bottom where the city ran that, that and then where the CRA took it over. So I just wanted to provide you with those stats because you requested those and so that you have those in front of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Since we last discussed this, I have secured a partnership with Tri-Rail. So they provide a first mile and last mile program that provides free Uber, taxi and other ride connections to and from select Tri-Rail stations within select service areas. All rides must begin and end at the Tri-Rail station. And that is currently happening from Delray Beach. You can see the service area maps there where it's the yellow. So they begin and end at Tri-Rail and they will drop off anywhere where you see the yellow overlay on the map. So essentially what this does is it provides connection to the downtown core and then over to the Palm Tran area. So what you have before you are now six options. Option one is the eight JEM vehicles. So those are the vehicles that you currently see running in the downtown Delray Beach area with the expanded service map area, but no Tri-Rail route. It is 813, 128 annually. Option two is five JEM vehicles and three Teslas, again, for the same expanded map, but not Tri-Rail route. And that is 841, 006 annually. Option three is for the five JEM vehicles in the existing smaller service area max, so just the CRA district, and not a Tri-Rail route for 508, 205. Option four is the five JEM vehicles and three Tesla for expanded map, including a Tri-Rail route at 84140. And option five, five JEM vehicles, three Tesla for expanded map and in, and the fixed Tri-Rail route, 84140. And then option six is all eight Tesla vehicles serving the expanded map and Tri-Rail with all point-to-point service. It's 887, 469. I just wanted to put the map up so you see it. So the green area is where it currently runs, the CRA district. The green and the peach colored area would be the expanded route that is included for options one, two, excuse me, one, two, four, five and six.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
Is that 24,000 included in that? Are we assuming we're getting that and it's taken off or is that on the slide previously? Option one, JEM vehicle with expanded service map, but not Tri-Rail.
Includes.
Includes, oh gee, first.
Yep, that includes our advertising subsidy, yes. So those are the six options that we have to choose from this evening, if you so please. Does anyone have any questions? I believe the vendor's on hand as well, if there are any specific questions.
Could I just say thank you? I, I want to just say how much we appreciate you for reaching out to Tri-Rail and making that happen. I know when we first had the email exchange, it wasn't possible, but you were persistent and diligent and you got it done and I want to say thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'd just like to say I'm, I'm excited. I go back to that freebie and how did that all happen? I wasn't kept appraised of what you were doing and congratulations.
Which part?
The partnership with the free.
So.
First and last mile.
When we first looked at taking this over from CRA district and it was placed in my office, I worked very closely with our previous transportation planner. And he and I were trying to figure out a way to utilize this. If we were going to have to put out a new RFP and, and do all of the planning, how could we make this service? We heard you loud and clear in January about having it serve more residents, not just tourists. And how would we make that happen? And maybe utilize this as a, as a way to alleviate additional congestion and parking in the downtown core and utilize it as well for workforce development, so a way to get workers into the downtown and other areas. And so we had reached out to Tri-Rail because we knew they had pilot programs in some of the communities in South Florida. At that time, they said they weren't adding additional areas and they just didn't have the funding. And funny enough, the Friday before I first presented to you on the 19th, they said, hey, we might want to add Delray Beach. And I said, well, hold on a second, let me, we have a, we have a meeting, so I need to, I need to get through the, the, the meeting with the services that we've offered. And anyway, we've continued the conversation since then and, and they agreed and, and put together a service map with our help and, and this is what they have.
Yes, you went over that so quickly and glossed over it. It's like, what, somebody's doing something for free at no cost to the city of riders and it includes residents west of I-95? That should have been your main, and then the cost.
I buried the lead, I'm sorry.
It's all right, you, you do what you think is right. But to me, this is a trumpet type thing to do. Now, if you would go back to the options.
Of course.
Because I want to make sure that whatever you're doing is going to be one of those. So with not having had the opportunity to really study this, I would imagine that option.
Well, all the options.
Six are the same, are they basically the same?
So options one and two do not include any sort of service to Tri-Rail, since we already have that being provided by Tri-Rail. But they do include the expanded map that includes all of the beach side and goes a little bit further south than it does currently. So it includes more service area of, of the, of our residents.
So why would we want to go back to the options? If we already have Tri-Rail taking care of the, that last mile, why would we even consider option, other than it's just a different, you know, change up in the vehicles? Why would we consider option like four or five?
Three.
Because I was advised by purchasing in legal that I had to include the original options that were provided by the vendor.
Because it just makes no sense to me that we would consider those. I think that's really between one, two and three because the, the Tri-Rail is going to be providing that, you know, last mile. And so there's no reason for us to have to service the Tri-Rail if in fact we already have that being serviced. So it would be one, two or three from my perspective unless somebody else sees something different.
I agree.
So anyway, so we're really down to one, two and three, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anyone else?
No, I just, as I stated at the previous meeting, I, I think we have to go to the expanded area. When the CRA was paying for this, it made good sense that it's in the CRA district. But all the taxpayers will now be paying for this, so we should serve as many as we can. And it's unfortunate, I was hoping with the Tri-Rail thing, it was going to drop the price down more. So, you know, but I don't think it's, it's not, doesn't seem appropriate to just cover the CRA district.
Yeah. Well, I also am not real excited about the Teslas because I just don't, I, I think that, you know, I'd rather go with an option number one or option number three. I mean, if we're going to keep the existing service, then I go with three. If we're going to expand it, then I go with the number one. But I, I don't think that I really want to see the Teslas because it's just, it, it doesn't say anything about our, our city.
I agree.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just have a, I just want to make sure that the existing service, does that include the Atlantic Crossing area? Because as part of the settlement agreement with Atlantic Crossing, we have to provide a shuttle bus. And while this is on a shuttle bus, it does meet the.
It does across, it's in the CRA district, sure.
Yes, yes, it does.
Could someone help me understand what is the, other than price, back to the options, I'm sorry, Sarah?
No problem.
Just keep your finger on it. What is the difference, other than price, between option one and option three?
It's just the number, the number of vehicles. You're only getting, first of all, the area.
Okay, I'm looking so hard, I didn't see that.
The area is going to be the existing area, otherwise the expanded, the expanded is more expensive.
It's the vehicles.
Also, there's going from five to eight.
And new Teslas.
Motion to go with option one.
Second.
Ryan wants to discuss.
Just, I just want to, one thing to consider. Our city manager is looking for $1.3 million for operating Old School Square. I would be in favor of number one until, you know, that challenge was brought, was brought to us, which I'm, you know, in favor of. Is that of assistance to you if we save 300,000? Because what was budgeted was the max amount. Remember, the max amount was budgeted, so that's over 800,000, that was budgeted. So if we're going to start looking for funds, which I know you have, you know, this might be a place where we do that and we put this off a year, this expansion off a year.
I'd be up for that.
Otherwise, prior to that, I was, you know, I was for the expansion.
That's 300,000 dollars towards that.
You know, but.
Well, how are you doing with Old School Square?
So based on direction and consensus offered during the October 20th joint workshop meeting, I've been again working with the Department of Finance and all departments, quite frankly, to identify any budget adjustment opportunities to bring that outcome to fruition. Likewise, I'm looking in every corner possible.
What do we actually, have we found?
We've identified maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. And what I'm referring to is being as less dependent as possible on the fund balance to accomplish this.
I'd be, and I would, for next year, I would consider going this way. But I'm going to support Ryan's thoughts of option three, just for one more year of the same in order to be able to find that three hundred thousand.
Yeah, I won't touch the fund balance, it's a non-starter for me. So, yeah, I think this would be, this would be helpful.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Motion to approve option three?
Mayor.
Yep.
Second with discussion.
Okay.
We didn't get data, and would you mind pulling up the data chart? Unfortunately, we don't really have data as to the ridership. The latest we have is 2020, and that was two years ago. So if we're going to encourage those who don't live in Delray, because they can't afford it, and we know that our downtown depends a lot on the persons who work there. People don't like to come to a restaurant and have to wait an hour before someone comes to their table or clears a table or whatever you need to do at the restaurants. I would be in favor of option one until we find out whether or not. Can we always go back and, or should we start low and increase? Or have more than we need and then decrease it?
Yeah, Jason Spiegel, managing partner at Freebie. I would just say, obviously, you guys have seen the ridership and the demand in the past. I mean, this past month in October, I think we moved around seventy-five hundred passengers. And that's high for October, which is not peak months. So we're coming into peak months here. And I would recommend, if you're going to stay with five, do not expand the zone yet, because that's just going to increase wait times. But, you know, today, we're probably able to accomplish maybe six out of ten requests that come in, based on the demand and the capacity that we have in five vehicles. So obviously, it's up to you guys, but that's kind of what we have on the plate.
And what was your motion that we do?
It was option three.
Or three, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and to reconsider expansion next year.
I would be starting with option one. We want our ridership. We want people to be accommodated. And hopefully, the demand, once the season begins, which we're praying it will begin soon, we might have a demand for it, because we'll be hiring people and just the whole nine yards. So I would not be in favor of option three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Petrolia?
Yes.
Mr. Frankel?
Yes.
Ms. Cassell?
Yes.
Mr. Ballston?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
No, no.
You know, listen, if things change, we get something, I think we can always bump it up. I think it's very hard to bump it down, so. From that perspective, yes.
So is there consensus to allow the manager to execute the agreement, so that I don't have to bring this back to you?
Yes.
Yes.
Based on your vote?
Based on the vote, that's part of the recommendation, yes.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to seven D, no, I'm sorry, we just did that. We are now in public, nope.
Eight A.
Eight A, which is the public hearings.
Ordinance number thirty dash twenty-two.
And I think Mr. Edwards is going to be here for a presentation. An ordinance of the City Commissioner of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations of the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Two, Administrative Provisions, Article 2.4, General Procedures, Section 2.4.3, Submission Requirements, Subsection A, Standard Application Items, and Subsection B, Standard Plan Items, to clarify the requirements for application and plan submissions for green building certification. Amending Section 2.4.6, Procedures for Obtaining Permits and Approvals, Subsection B, Building Permits, to Include Green Certification as a Requirement to Obtain a Building Permit. By amending Chapter Three, Performance Standards, Article 3.2, Performance Standards, Section 3.2.3, Standards for Site Plan and/or Plot Actions, to add a new subsection L, referencing Sustainability Goals and Regulations for Development of Site Plans. By amending Chapter Four, Zoning Regulations, Article 4.4, Base Zoning District, Section 4.4.1.3, Central Business CBD District. Subsection F, Architectural Standards, to clarify subsection nine, Reduction of Urban Heat Islands, Providing Specifications for Roofed and Non-roofed Areas, and to delete subsection ten, Green Building Practices in its entirety. By amending Chapter Seven, Building Regulations, to enact a new Article 7.11, Sustainable Design and Construction Practices, to provide green building certification requirements, application procedures, and bond requirements for city and private development. And by amending Appendix A Definitions, to add a new definition for Sustainability and Resilience Fund, Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, Authority to Codify, and Providing an Effective Date. This is second hearing, second reading.
Okay, so we're going to have a presentation, thank you.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Deputy Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. I'm Ken Edwards, Sustainability Officer for the City of Delray Beach. Very happy to be here tonight to present regarding the green building ordinance. So first, just a little bit of background. I know y'all are aware of this, but for the record, green building ordinance is consistent with many goals, policies, and objectives that are in the comprehensive plan. Of course, in Conservation, Sustainability, and Resilience, Goal Five, it specifically says, increase the number of green buildings, which this ordinance would do. But there are also many other benefits from electricity use reduction, promotion of the green economy, healthier buildings, and across many of the elements. Also, healthy communities, housing, capital improvement, and others. The green building ordinance is consistent with those. And historically wise, back in 2009, the Green Task Force report suggested or recommended a green building ordinance. One was passed in 2015. And then since 2019, we have been working to broaden that improvement and are here for second reading again tonight. So some of the features that take into consideration, comments, direction from the commission, and really improve the ordinance, specifically the Florida Green Building Coalition, National Green Building Standard, Green Globes, in addition to lead certification programs are specifically mentioned in the ordinance. I reached out to each of those organizations and asked about equivalency, because there were questions about levels and equivalency. And I got confirmation from each of them that this particular equivalency matrix they agreed with, there's only the lower two levels of certification that were there, but those were the levels that the organizations and other credential professionals thought were equivalent across all four of the certification programs. And also, another very important point is that the lower levels of certification, construction costs are virtually identical to the non-certification programs. And the reason for that is certification programs get many points from the Florida Building Code. As you go up higher, the flexibility in certification programs is less. Some of the programs are more difficult to get points in. But at the lower levels, the entry and the first level up, the costs are much reduced and equivalent across the board. So taking those comments, a new component of this draft ordinance is minimum level certification requirement for buildings from fifteen thousand to fifty thousand square feet. And that square footage is in one or more buildings on a single parcel or as a part of unified development. Also, the existing green building requirement has been expanded to the whole city. So a tier up, or fifty thousand square foot and larger, would be the silver level requirement. The ordinance does not apply to the historic buildings and many renovations. And those buildings are already sustainable. If you're using materials that are in those buildings, and that's a positive thing, and so no need to add on an additional burden, at least at this point. The effective date for the ordinance is one year after approval. And that's important, because plans need to be put in place, hiring procedures would need to be put in place. There's also a provision for reevaluating the ordinance in four years. So after the one year, it's implemented for three. And it's within the four years, we wouldn't have to wait for a full four years. And there's multiple things that I'll mention in a minute, that we could take a look at and potentially improve. And also had many questions about, does the ordinance apply to city projects? And it definitely does, just like other kinds of development. So what are the effects and what will happen in the future? As I mentioned, the existing green building ordinance would be expanded to the whole city in this draft. We're adding on a new tier, so it will increase the number of green buildings in that fifteen to fifty thousand range. There were comments about EV and solar-ready ordinances, and I did do a good bit of research on that. The solar-ready ordinances really are very few. And because of the design features there and the technical aspect of solar, that definitely is going to take more research on, still possible, but it would take time to put together. There are many municipalities that are looking at EV-ready ordinances, though. Those still mainly apply to multifamily and commercial development. There's a trigger based on the number of parking spaces. There's different levels of readiness. So is it ready? Is it capable? Is it fully functional? And there's different levels of chargers. So really, with outreach to the community, working with development services, and certainly additional direction, I just, I think we can do those things and we'd have the time period to put those together. Very good things to add on. Similarly, with incentives, there are a lot of incentives out there in other green building ordinances. They mainly deal with processing timeframe and also a fee that's given back. And at least now, in our current budget consideration, I wasn't sure about proceeding with a fee incentive. And as we're going to E-permitting right now, which I think is going to be a great benefit, but just at this point, creating an incentive on that, it's not included in the ordinance. Something very good for us to consider going forward, though, I think we are going to be in a good situation for both of those. As you know, there is a Florida statute that requires municipal and other kind of governmental buildings to get green building ordinance. So this ordinance would be consistent with that and put a little more detail on it. The ordinance is very simple. It's designed to be successful, but still a straight, still a step forward. So should not increase processing timeframe for permits. And I have gotten a lot of phone calls and emails about this ordinance. There are a lot of other places that are watching us, and I feel confident that they will follow if we move forward on this. So in closing, a big point, why are we doing this at all? It's not just a good thing. It's really important in the reduction of greenhouse gases. I just completed a inventory, working with ICLI, and forty-four percent of our emissions now come from buildings. So the green building ordinance would be a step forward in addressing that and set us up for future abilities also. And also, transportation accounts for fifty-one percent of our emissions. Within most of the green building certification programs, transportation have some aspects there. So whether it's walkability or EV charger installs in a building or being near mass transit. So there are several things that get green building credits that would address transportation. Green building ordinance would allow us to address the two main that we must address to address our emissions. And really, if we're serious about the race to zero and meeting that fifty percent reduction by 2030, then a green building ordinance is a really important part of that. And addressing carbon emissions will help us address climate change. And again, that's a very, very high priority, I believe, for the community. And with that, I thank you, we'll take any questions.
All right, very good. To the Commissioner. Public comment. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Excuse me. This is a public, this is a public hearing, so we're going to move to the public. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak to this ordinance, please step forward, state your name, address, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, Joy Howell. I think I keep jumping up to stay warm. Joy Howell, twenty-five Northwest Twenty-Fourth Court. Just wanted to briefly touch on this. I'm actually very much in favor of it. I think it's a thoughtful product, and I really thank Ken Edwards and all the city staff who worked hard on it. I attended another, at least one other meeting on this, in addition to it coming before us with planning and zoning. But I did want to mention to you, my vote on planning and zoning, I did vote for it. However, I really thought it, I was hoping it would go further. It's a big improvement over the fifty thousand threshold to go down to fifteen thousand. But I was really hoping that it could go even further. And my only real point to you today, I love the fact that there's a reevaluation point in here within four years. I just wonder if you want to set anything up that's like, you know, every four years or something? Because this is a rapidly evolving field. And I'd hate to see it just, you know, get pushed aside. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Hi, Nancy, Nancy Shannon, two hundred, Northeast Second Avenue. I'm on the green board, but I'm speaking as a private citizen. Thank you, Kent, for all your hard work. And I'm really excited about this. Like Joy, I was hoping for more, but you have to be realistic also. It's a great start, and I'm, this is brief for me and positive. I'm just really excited to see it on the agenda. And if we are a bellwether for other cities, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good afternoon, Christina Morrison, one thousand Lowry Street, down the street in downtown Delray Beach. Thanks to Kent, he's been working for years on trying to carve something that we can start with. Joy is absolutely right. We wish you could do more, but we have to start somewhere. There's supply chain issues. Everybody's trying to get things done. We don't want to create another shortage or an issue with building permits and putting this into action. This is lenient enough that we can get started right away with it and then come back and revisit it and maybe make it more stringent, as Joy recommended. So I would hope that you could pass this, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, public comment is closed, to the Commissioner. Ryan, did you want to start?
Yeah, I'll start. Kent, can you do me a favor and just highlight the main differences between last time you presented this to us for consideration, which was in December of last year, and today?
Yes, there is the additional tier of the fifteen thousand to fifty thousand square foot. And.
And that tier is just bottom level certified, like the intro level certified?
Right. It is the entry level, which, you know, is across all four programs equivalent and has the highest, you know, proximity to a Florida Building Code cost.
So once you're building to Florida codes, you're basically there.
Except, there is a real benefit to having a, basically a project manager that works for you that is familiar with the construction and the documents, that the building code and any of the other features that are in your designer are made. So it's not, it's not just the on paper, it's actual, the functionality and an expert that's reviewing it.
Great benefit in the process, which I know is one of the things we're trying to accomplish. But the building is basically the same. If it was built to Florida Building Code or meets this entry level tier, the building's basically the same.
Well, I would say, in practical application, having an additional person that goes out and inspects, it does make a difference.
Okay, so they may catch some things, but.
Yes.
Okay.
And I get that in speaking from inspectors and credential professionals that work. I mean, it's just good to have an additional eye and have accountability out there.
Yeah, for sure.
Otherwise, you know, in design, there is about the same. The, in December, when we came forward, it's five thousand square foot threshold across the board. And it was the goal recommendation. So there is a reduction in the level of certification in both tiers and also a change in the square footage threshold. And those were in response to a lot of comments that came. And in fact, at the Planning and Zoning Board, the threshold recommendation was the fifteen thousand square feet.
Can you go back to that slide for me? Where it shows at fifteen thousand square feet, fifty thousand square feet, what qualification level? Yeah, this here.
Next one up?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's silver for fifty, and in that fifteen, again, that fifteen to fifty, it's not at silver, it's just at that entry level.
It is the entry level. And a point was made, which is a really good one, which we're coming out of a pandemic. There is inflation, there's interest levels, there's supply chain. And I think it's reasonable to consider all of those, plus our first step forward right now. This is something that can work. And if it works, then it will be just the beginning, I think. I think we'll have some very good incentives and other improvements that we could put forward.
But aren't all buildings that are built to the Florida Code, which have to be? Aren't they basically all very close to this entry level?
They are close to the entry level. I'll give you one example. Florida Building Code requires a blower door test. Blower door test measures tightness of a building. So it has to be done, but does anybody particularly look at it? And what is the score into that?
Yeah.
The gallery says yes.
So can I just ask this question? Why not, why not have that level of certification for all buildings over five thousand square feet?
Well, the best ordinance that we can get, I certainly am in favor of. And that going down to five thousand square foot would increase the number, so.
And I think originally, we were talking about five thousand square feet at silver.
Well.
At least it was under discussion. At least it was under discussion, which would have been very aggressive, would have been state leading, and I get why we've kind of pumped the brakes on that. I just know that as far as input, you said you've, you know, had a lot of people reach out to you. We've had one public meeting, and this was kind of what I was worried about, is that in December, we decided to put this off for a few months and get some additional input. It ended up being a year. And we had one outreach meeting, which I have the sign-in sheet for. It was actually titled Developer Outreach. And aside from a CRA and a city staff member, the other six people, seven people that were in the room were all in the development community. So it wasn't filled with residents necessarily. As a matter of fact, some of them even put in that they're, they're representing their company here.
May I interrupt? I think there was, there must have been another meeting. I attended a meeting. There were multiple. There were like three or four.
That was my follow-up. That was my follow-up question. Were there, were there additional meetings?
In October 2021, there was the additional one and it was, there was more participation in that meeting. But I know, I reached out and I had meetings and phone calls with quite a few people. It was on the agenda for every green board meeting. And all of the people that either by phone or email or came to a meeting were on a list that I sent out emails to updating them. And in fact, on this meeting, I sent out the agenda to all of that group again. So we were very hard in sustainability to keep the community. Certainly the development community is going to be affected and with my regulatory background, I think that is an important part of the community. But we did really work to inform and take input from, from all sectors.
Do you feel like we're, we're somewhere in the middle of what that, that community, that part of our community wanted and what was originally proposed by the Green Implementation Board?
I, I'm not sure exactly where, where it would fall. I think the development community believes that this is a step forward and that is something that they can do. And under the conditions that we have right now, I know, I think that that is a positive. Plus overall, when you look at, at other cities that have these, I mean Miami Beach has the gold requirement and either a 7,000 or a 10,000 square foot threshold, depending on, on the kind of construction. But Coconut Creek has a 5,000 square foot and, and it is just the certification level, the entry level. So, and otherwise, there aren't a whole lot of municipalities that require. There are incentive base, there are suggestions, just turn in a draft certification list. Really having a requirement at all at any level is, is really more rare. And so it is a, I believe, it is a significant step.
So with little, so this, I will just say to my colleagues, with little to no additional expenditure, as you mentioned, for the entry level, the entry level, because of Florida building codes, why, why not, why not do 5,000 square feet? I won't even fight for the silver, I won't fight for the gold, but if we're going to just go with this entry level, which I don't think that was even on the table a year ago, we were only talking silver and gold, why not go 5,000 square feet and above? If they're going to qual, if, if, if it's not much of an increase anyways with your, when you're meeting Florida building codes, why not lean a little bit more towards the recommendations of our Green Implementation Board over the recommendations of our, you know, Developer Outreach Program?
Are you asking?
Yeah, that's, that's, I'm opening up for discussion.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
I'm in favor of doing whatever we need to do to start being serious about climate change. I don't know all the ramifications of it. I am just in favor of doing something. And if 5,000 square feet is amenable and no one's objected, maybe because we said it was what, what...
Silver.
No, the lowest amount. I'm looking, what was the lowest amount? 25, 20? What was the lowest? 50,000?
It would be five to 50, all the way to 50.
Okay, so whatever 15,000, lowering it to 5,000 is all right with me. We talk, we talk, we talk. We need to start doing something. And if we get any pushback, just because it's four years of a, of a review, does not mean if we get enough pushback as to why it couldn't, shouldn't be done between the 5,000 and the 15,000, then we might need to make a change. But right now, whatever we need to do to make this happen, I am in favor of, and Theo, are you coming?
No.
She's just only moving closer right now.
She's just moving closer.
Or like orange.
We, we noticed move, we noticed movement in the room, believe it or not. Anybody who relocates their chair and they come a little, we take notice.
Not red yet, just orange.
I would say, within the construct, the existing draft, some things that, that would fall right into place would be adding on an additional tier, right? And going down to 5,000 square feet within, within the four-year timeframe. And also adding on an incentive to step up, because that was a recommendation that we heard from, from lots of places, is yes, cover more construction, but use incentives. But working out exactly what those incentives are so they work for staff and the community with, is, is something. I do foresee lowering that square footage threshold and having incentives within the...
So why not do it now? So why not do it now?
Well, that's...
I'm sorry, here she is. We said it, we hit the button.
That's where I turned red.
Sorry. Okay, so I understand where you're trying to go. Truly, truly do. But we did have a lot of public input and Kent has dealt with people individually. We've gone back out there. The concern is that if you drop it to 5,000, it picks up a lot of residential development in our community. And there was a lot of pushback about the expense of having to hire the consultant, which is what this leads to, to pick it up.
We just keep churning this.
And that was, that was why I think we, I agree that 50,000, and that was why you guys set it back down at first, first reading was too high. So there are two tiers, 15 to 50 is certified and then 50 and up, like downtown is now everywhere, requires certification. My concern is that this was mass emailed out to everyone who participated. And if we mess with the level at adoption, I think that you might have a bigger crowd here that isn't, you know, they saw this.
Because we've been there, we've already been there.
So that's my only concern and...
And this is why I made such a big deal about it in first, in first reading. I mean, I really, really made a big deal about it because I didn't want to just be making changes from the day as obviously during.
Right. So, so we can go back out again. I would just ask, if you give us direction, I don't know.
I hear you.
I would want to make sure that they all know what the change is.
Yeah.
So the change right now from the last time you saw it is, it is 50,000 and it's not just a building, it's a development and it could be multiple smaller buildings have to be silver or equivalent.
Right. I certainly don't want to put it back out. We have to take a step forward tonight, so, but I just, I was just putting that to my colleagues, just, but I thank you.
That's my only concern is like, we don't have people here objecting like last time and...
Do you think there'd be the same issue with changing the four-year review to two years?
No, I don't. I don't think that would be...
Okay, because this, this, this industry's moving way too quickly and this is way too important of a topic to sit back and wait four years.
Okay, and remember the effective date of this ordinance is a little different than usual ordinances, because to hit a silver standard, you have to start before you show up for your permit, pretty early on. So it's one year from here. So if you want to shorten the, you know, after two years, see how we're doing, which would effectively be one year of, of permits coming through, then that would, I don't have any issue with checking it. That's not a problem for me at all. I think...
Okay, so before we do anything, Commissioner Casell?
No, I just wanted to reiterate what was said, which is, this is the standard they're building at. So the only difference is the, the smaller buildings would incur an additional fee for the assessment. And so it's reasonable, I thank you for your, all the time you put into this. I know there were a lot of meetings and I know a lot of people attended and provided input.
Commissioner Duncan?
I'd just like to quickly thank, thank everyone who's been involved in this. To me, this, and this is all I'm going to say, this is like what happened after Hurricane Andrew, when the Miami Dade County and whoever else said, we've got to do something. Those buildings were totally inadequate and here we are, how many years later, just trying to do it, just trying to make it happen. And the climate isn't waiting and the longer we wait, thank you.
Turn of motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number 30-22 with the amendment of the reevaluation year from four years to two years.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Casell.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Petrollia.
Yes. Okay, moving on, 8B, this is Resolution 126-22.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, approving the inventory list of city-owned property appropriate, appropriate for use as affordable housing pursuant to Section 166.0451 Florida statutes and providing an effective date and further purposes. This is a public hearing, ma'am.
Yep. Mr. Wors.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, apparently I just come up and make presentations, so I'll try to keep this one moving for you. Section 166.0451 of the Florida statutes requires that every three years, the city take a look at what surplus land it has and create an inventory of surplus land that's appropriate for affordable housing. To complete this assignment, this is very similar to, I presented you a list several meetings ago, very similar last. To complete the assignment, we reviewed about 235 parcels that the city owns. The parcels that were suitable for affordable housing to determine that, we eliminated undersized and oddly configured parcels determined to be unbuildable. Parcels that might normally be rights of way, but were not recorded as such, underwater parcels, kind of hard to live underwater, I guess unless you're SpongeBob. Lots leased to nonprofits, parcels with readily identifiable recorded restrictions, parcels that we currently use for parks or some of those other typical city functions. After all the conditions recount for, a list of 12 parcels remained. As I mentioned, I brought a similar list to you before, it actually had 14 parcels. We have since found that two of the parcels that were presented last time had issues that had them drop off this list. I did it again. So what is the, the statute required? The City Commission review the list at a public hearing. At the conclusion of the public hearing, the City Commission may revise the list. Following the public hearing, the City Commission must adopt a resolution, we have that before you, that includes an inventory list of such property that is appropriate for affordable housing, that's ready to go unless you change it. The City Commission may authorize the sale of these properties and use the proceeds to buy land for the development of affordable housing or increase the city's fund for affordable housing. As an alternative to this, the City Commission may also authorize the land to be sold with a restriction that the property be developed as affordable housing or may donate the land to a nonprofit housing organization for the construction of permanently affordable housing. And it may also authorize making the property available for use for the production and preservation of permanent affordable housing. I've got the 12 properties, I'll go through them pretty quickly. As I mentioned, you've seen them before. South Bridge Road, down by Fourth and Linton. There's actually two lots there. Number one, no major issues with, it is suitable in size and all. Number two here, there may be some access issues. The Zeta Avenue there terminates right about the start of that lot, so whoever would be constructing a home here might have to extend that or otherwise provide access. There's a lot out in by Crossman's Phase Two. This one, as, as you've heard me say before, the city would like to hold on to. It was, at one time, rumor has it designated for a future water storage area if we required it. Utilities has indicated they would like to hold on to it for that purpose, should we need a water storage tank in the western part of the city. 126 Northwest 2nd Avenue, right behind City Hall here. It's currently used by the city for some minimal parking and some storage, but otherwise is appropriate. The slab in driveway of the previous home that was on that site still exists. These four lots, I'll try to briefly bring them all together. They're all basically about half-size of normal lots that, that we have in the area. Some of the conditions we have that are difficult for these to be improved, they, they can be used as affordable housing, however, they are on an unimproved alleyway. The alleyway would need to be paved. Plus, there are no access to utilities here, so utilities would need to be run down the alleyway to provide services to these lots. Additionally, utilities, as mentioned, a concern that the gravity sanitary line that runs on Southwest Fourth may not, Fourth may not be deep enough and homes there might require a pump station to move wastewater. Again, there's four of them, number five and number six are directly behind 411 Southwest 5th Avenue. There's six. Number seven is behind 418 Southwest 4th Avenue. These do not have assigned addresses right now, except for the 411 and a half that I just showed. And number eight is behind 412 Southwest 4th Avenue. 133 Southwest 12th Avenue, as well as some of the others that I'm going to go over in a second, are all lots that you all have authorized for transfer to the CRA, but since that has not yet happened, we wanted to make sure they were legally included on those They likely require some rezoning, they're currently CF, and some of them have structures which would need to be demolished. The 12 on Southwest 11th is actually a parking lot now, the asphalt would probably be, have to be removed. That is our entire list of properties.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Lynn, just so I understand this, because I just have, before we were given the list as potential properties, we're going to deem them to be used for affordable housing or sold with the proceeds going to affordable housing?
So this is just approving it for staff to be able to bring it before you? We would still have to convey the property and do the normal notice requirements.
I guess my question would be, we have a company out looking to potentially overhaul City Hall, utilizing property that we have. We, if we were to go with five, six, seven, eight, they wouldn't even have access. There seems like that's not a good idea. Three, the city wants to retain because we may have a use for it. And I don't remember why I put down four, but it looks like three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12. We shouldn't do any of it because we don't know what we're going to need to build City Hall. That, the nine, 10, 11, 12 could have some potential value. And while I appreciate we need affordable housing, we need to find the money to do City Hall as well. So I think at this point in time, I would say no on the entire list. I'm sorry.
Do we have that option?
Okay, I was going to say, do we have to?
Yes, you've considered it and you've made a finding that, you know, for other reasons, at this point, there's nothing to put on the list. So I have to, I have to agree to a certain, to a certain point, but especially with those ones that are alley access only, you know, when I'm looking at that from a bird's eye view, it looks like that's a great location to potentially, you know, with other properties aggregate and then come in with some sort of a small, you know, development of, you know, properties. However, until we get to that point, I, I think that it's moot to have it on there. I think that if we want to do something with those properties, we need to be thinking about how are we going to be able to get them so that there is access right off of, you know, the main road. A feeder line can be brought in, we're not having to bring in down an alleyway electric, electric and for, for properties that were never meant to be, you know, fronting in alleyway and, and an address, a legal address. So I agree with you.
And to add to that, we don't even know what the feasibility is to get the pump station in to remove the sewage. So, and I can't remember what four was, that's a...
There was one that just needed a driveway extension.
Yeah, that, that, the two first ones, I think, were fine. The South Ridge ones, I would leave on the list.
Yeah.
But that one I don't, wouldn't, because that's the one you, and this one I wouldn't because this might be something we include with the expansion of the city.
Right, that's the property behind City Hall.
Right. So just remember, just because it's on the list, it's not a shall, you know, it's... I understand, but you know, when you put it out there, you're tempting everybody to come in because you've now said, hey, you know... This, this will lead to potential unsolicited... Yes, absolutely.
You can look back at one and two.
One and two, I'm fine.
Yeah, I think I am too.
Should we wait until we get the presentation regarding the property and the potential, what we're going to do with City Hall? Because when they presented to us, they said they were going to look at all our property available.
But we can say no to it.
Yeah, I, I doubt...
At least, at least we know that this could be. They could be included in the proposals you received. That's correct, that's what I'm saying.
That's what I'm saying.
It could be. Yeah, but there were, we're signifying that this is, these are two, you know, normalized lots on areas that basically can get the electric and, and would have an actual address. on areas that basically can get the electric and would have an actual address, those two are not a problem, but the rest of them, you know, there are other things going on that makes sense, to take them off.
Take them off.
Take them off of the list.
Just this list that we have to turn to the state, that's it.
Okay. I'd just like to say I agree with one and two, I don't, no, I have not looked at them. They look developable, developable, if that's a word, by someone, maybe. Number three, I'm not quite sure of, we've been asked by utilities not to do anything with. One-twenty-six, which is behind us, just might be something that we'll be developing.
You might incorporate, absolutely.
And so, five, six, seven, and eight, I don't know if you remember, we had before as a CRA, a desire to have the CRA purchase property, and I don't, it doesn't belong to the city, this was a private...
No, this, these are...
No, I know, I'm just saying, five, six, seven, and eight, there was a problem with the pollution EPA.
Oh.
So we might want to just kind of hold off on those, we might have, and again, I want to say it might even be the property between eighth and seventh, number eight and number seven, rather, but it was on Fifth Avenue, I thought, so we just might want to keep it because there's an issue. Just don't do anything with it until we know. Nine, ten, eleven, and twelve, I've been working with the city to try and get it to the point where we can use it for affordable workforce, however you want to determine housing, and we've run into a few issues, but we're working them through, so I would definitely like to keep nine, ten, eleven, and twelve until it's no longer, it was the issue of maybe giving it to, deeding it or however it's going to be done to the CRA, and they're still working on trying to clear the properties.
But I think that we're saying that these are ready to go, and they're not, I mean, they're first of all, not even zoned properly, there's some things that have to be done with them.
Especially if you're going to consider deeding it over to the CRA. You don't need to include it on this list.
Don't.
Don't include it on the list, okay.
Because we can do it anyway, in other words, this is just going to have outsiders coming in and out of things, so.
Right, and we don't want that, so.
Correct, so I think that one and two, and do we have a, do we have a motion?
Yeah, so you're going to, did we open it up for...
Number three.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, not yet.
I'm sorry.
Gosh.
Sorry.
Losing it. Anybody want to speak to resolution number one-twenty-six dash twenty-two?
Just real quickly, you've already...
I don't know. We just had a few questions.
Rehashed everything, just real quickly, these particular parcels...
Say your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We know who you are, but just...
Okay, thank you, Attorney Christina Morrison, one thousand Lowry Street in downtown Delray Beach. These four lots would be perfect for a concept we've been kicking around in planning and zoning, a community of tiny homes, affordable tiny homes, that, and these are four contiguous lots, it would be perfect for that. To give it to the CRA, we can pursue it with that board, but when I look at these parcels, it just screams out that that's a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion would just be to approve one-twenty-six dash twenty-two with the revised list, only to include numbers one and two?
The moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wors. All right, moving to first readings, ordinance number fourteen dash twenty-two.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Delray Beach, Florida, adopting a small-scale land use map amendment redesignating a parcel of land measuring approximately point-one-eight acres located generally east of North Federal Highway and south of Northlake Avenue, as more particularly described herein, for medium density to general commercial, pursuant to the provisions of the Community Planning Act, Florida Statute, section one-sixty-three point three-one-eight-seven, providing a conflicts clause and a separability clause, providing an effective date and further purposes. And I believe this is first reading.
First read.
There's no presentation.
Motion approved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Petolia.
Yes.
Mr. Frankel.
Yes.
Ms. Cassell.
Yes.
Mr. Bolston.
Yes.
Okay, on to comments and inquiries of non-agenda item, Mr. Moore.
Yes, I actually have one item, and it relates to a topic we addressed during the last couple meetings. Talk a little bit about the no-before requirements and that I've spent time with Director of Information Technology, Jay Stacy, in terms of some analysis as to why we are where we are. So interestingly enough, the present-day compliance rate is about seventy-six percent, however, digging into the data analytics, it's been fairly well determined that the difference between a seventy-six percent complacency rate vis-à-vis, for instance, about a ninety-five percent complacency rate and higher, has to do with the fluctuating and challenging schedules of public safety personnel, primarily those in fire rescue, some in the police department, but primarily in fire rescue, therefore, a direction being offered over the next week to two weeks to achieve complacency in that regard. So examining the numbers and engaging the data analytics and statistics, that's the distinction in that regard, so that's been determined. Again, I've consulted with staff in the Department of Information Technology to offer that evaluation, likewise resulting in direction to leadership in public safety, both departments, fire rescue and police, to achieve full complacency in those areas over the next week to two weeks, so we're looking forward to a robust outcome in that regard, and my interest this evening is to share that with the City Commission publicly.
So are you saying that twenty percent, the twenty percent differential, or thereabouts nineteen percent, between seventy-six and ninety-five percent lies with the fire department?
And police?
Fire, greater to extent, fire rescue, to some extent, police as well, yes.
All right, so...
With a standard error of about two to three percent.
Did they not have the time on the front end in order to be able to get this done? I mean, how can they complete it in the next couple of weeks but couldn't complete it in the last, what, month?
Well, it's now being mandated, number one. Number two, the communication offered to me as a result of my little analysis, as I just shared here this evening, is challenges and fluctuating schedules and that, and not making the connection, but nevertheless, we're going forward.
The way that I hear that is that is an excuse, okay? I mean, it's just, I'm just...
Not my excuse.
Now, I understand, but what you're doing is you're coming up here and you're giving us the excuse, so it is your excuse. What I'm trying to say to you is that if they couldn't get it done in the last month but can get it done in the next couple of weeks, that's called an excuse, so I'm not buying it, I just have to tell you, listen, this isn't even my big deal, I'm just saying that what you're telling me is something that doesn't make sense. We've been given a month to get it done, and what they're saying is, is because of schedules, they can only get it done now in the next two weeks. They've had a month, there's four weeks in that month, and so now all of a sudden, two weeks is going to make all the difference in the world. I just don't understand how that works, that's what I'm trying to say, what you're saying to me doesn't make sense. Okay?
Okay.
All right, very good, but to get to ninety-five percent compliance, I'm very happy to give the, extend the extra two weeks, with the understanding that we need to get these things done at the end of each month as, or whenever they're due, in order to be able to come up to that compliance.
Which is my principal point, and that is the direction of all involved.
Okay.
So substantively speaking, I'm appreciative of having that opportunity.
Absolutely, and I am too, so.
Thank you.
And I have to say, I'm very happy to be in compliance. I sit right next to Commissioner Johnson. All right, so anyway, anything else, Mr. Moore?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, very good, to the city attorney.
As you may recall, we have an agreement with the Delray Chamber Education Fund, D-B-C-E-F, to wrap our bus shelters, as you've seen a few of them around the city. I've received a request today that there is a bus shelter that they would like to have wrapped, it's not on the exhibit list, and they merely just want to swap out whatever's, one of the shelters on the list with this particular shelter. If Missy is in agreement with it, they have the sponsor, they have the ability to get it done, is that something that the commission's comfortable with, or do you want me to bring it back with a formal amendment for you to be able to...
What was the purpose, I mean, why, why is one bus shelter okay and another bus shelter not, just curious?
Probably location.
I think it's the location, they wanted it near their place of business, I don't know who the sponsor is, but their request is to have a shelter that is near their place of business.
Where is the one that...
I'm sorry?
Where is the one that would be swapped out?
They would just pick one to just take out from the list, they, we only gave, I believe it was eighteen, and so we're going to maintain the eighteen, but, is that okay?
I don't have a problem.
So I'll just ask Mr. Moore to execute that amendment with the commission's approval?
Sure.
That's okay? Thank you.
Those that I've seen are beautiful, so I wish we could do them all if we could get sponsors, so much nicer.
I don't want to say it, because I know that there was artwork in the whole...
Thank you very much, that's all I have.
All right, so moving on to, anything else? All right, to the commission, who wants to start?
I would just, one short thing, I have the county's Affordable Housing meeting tomorrow, so if there's any items that anybody, any questions about or comments that you'd like me to make when I'm there.
Good luck on your referendum.
That's the, yeah, that's the county's, but I'm sure I will be...
You said county.
Yeah, I'm going to the county meeting, not my referendum, but I'm going to the...
County meeting, sorry.
So hopefully, next meeting, I'll have some updates from that.
Very good.
Okay, I'm going to go quickly a second. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for the no-before information, just before this meeting, I asked for the latest update, we're at seventy-five percent, which is thirty percent increase from last Tuesday's meeting, so I guess my little hatchet or whatever must have worked a little bit, I don't know. I love it that we're finally paying attention and we're being serious about it, I don't know the reason why our safety was not able to be in compliance, but I would think a week would be enough, I don't know, is someone away for two weeks that they're not going to be on vacation, or just, we didn't get an explanation, so I'm with you, Mayor, it doesn't hold water. I know that they're busy and they can only do so much at a time, that might be commendable, however, these are only ten, fifteen minutes, I don't know one that's more than twenty minutes, and unfortunately, there's someone here on the dais who still needs to do a little more work, I won't call the name, neither did I. Anyway, we're at seventy-five percent, the next time we meet, wouldn't it be nice if we could say we're at a hundred percent, and then we can start working on those people who are habitual clickers? We'll get to them next.
I didn't click on you.
No, nobody clicks, right? Maybe a "gotcha" would come out and say, "We gotcha, you shouldn't have clicked on that." Anyway, number two, I'd like to know who is responsible for collecting the city street trash? We have a problem, don't know if it's come to your attention, Mr. Moore, but...
Depends on where it is, so give a location.
Yeah, well, anyplace around the Green Market on a Saturday morning when there is trash overflowing from Friday night's events, I don't know who is responsible, maybe at two o'clock at night, between five in the morning, of collecting all of the overflowing trash that has accumulated.
Mr. Moore is aware of this, because we got a lot of complaints, so he can tell you that I think it's been handled, no?
Yes, ma'am, and that does involve coordination, believe it or not, with waste management as well, as our solid waste service providers, so connecting the dots with the Clean and Safe Program, working collaboratively with the CRA, there is some involvement of the City of Delray Beach in addition to waste management. So over the weekend, because I personally played a visit over to the Green Market, as it was brought to my attention that there was an issue, I was able to immediately follow up with leadership in the Department of Neighborhood and Community Services to connect the dots in that regard. Mr. Waldhauer, you and I offered a written communication with one another over the past day to get ourselves squared away in terms of where we are, so if you can be brief in responding, I think it would be great to come from you.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the commission, Sam Waldhauer, Neighborhood and Community Services, yes, we have made a revision in terms of staffing, what we're going to start doing as of the next Green Market event, we're going to have staff on-site for the market during the duration of the market, so we've assigned a couple of people, we've given both to Renee, and she's sharing it with Ms. Johnson of the Green Market, the contact information for the person who's going to be literally on-site. We've talked to Waste Management specifically about making sure that their run-through on that day, because they run every day in the downtown area, making sure that they clear those out, and we'll have our Clean and Safe General Maintenance Crew in addition to that, making sure that they get there before the Green Market starts and coming back in the afternoon, so we've looked at those measures to make sure that that doesn't become an issue in the future.
Thank you very much, I think and know that it's most important when we have this transition from the Friday night enjoyment.
Right, right.
And the Green Market, cleanliness and food and the whole process. But I'm also a little concerned about every day, you said there's a collection, people are going to be coming back home, coming back in, the season's starting, if I were to go out on a Wednesday morning to have breakfast somewhere, Green Owl, I would not like to see trash overflowing from the night before revelry.
Absolutely, we are talking to Waste Management, they pick up every day, they dump those...
Do you happen to know?
It's always between about six and eight o'clock in the morning, and then what we will make sure we do is make sure our maintenance crew runs back through in case something is missed, because we talked specifically to Trevor, who's the person who runs the baby truck through the downtown.
Because we've done such a wonderful job inside Old School Squares Park, I'd like to see it extend out into the entertainment district.
Mr. Waldhauer, just on the same issue, I don't know that you have to have somebody there around the clock because, on a day that, you know, is, you know, where there's an activity, it's more of, after anything that's happening on the campus, we have to have some cleanup crew coming in, and that is Friday night to Saturday morning, so when the Saturday morning people come in, they're not dealing with overflowing garbage cans, same thing from Saturday to Sunday, you know, in the evening or in the morning, needs to be cleaned out so that we have just a, you know, clean spot for people to be able to do their thing.
Christmas trees coming, so...
Right, absolutely.
Can I add to that? I was actually there, and I do think someone probably ought to be there on Saturdays, and I'll tell you why. If they picked up in the morning, there were ten bags of garbage surrounding a tree, the two, I sent pictures to Mr. Moore, garbage containers were so overflowing that people were just leaving stuff on the top and on the ground, it was a disgusting disaster.
It was, when I came over.
And the gentleman, I was there for the entire time, at one point I saw him carting about twenty additional bags on the golf cart strapped with rope off to somewhere, so I don't know what the garbage is, but there's an astronomical amount of it. Now, we did have the witch's ride, and we were, this was even before the kid fest started, but I think...
But there was something that night before, that's probably what happened.
Correct, so...
That should have been cleaned up.
Okay.
Okay, I think we just need someone to be in charge, supervisor, I don't know what level, to make sure that we're going to start activating the park again, and we're going to have events going on, and it's not necessarily going to be Friday, it could be Thursday, it could be a Wednesday, someone should be responsible for knowing that the trash is not being picked up, that's all my... That was coming, thank you, thank you, Mr. Waldhauer, I appreciate it.
Mr. Waldhauer.
Number three, thank you for your votes, for allowing me or asking me to continue as your CRA chair, it's been enjoyable, I'd like to see someone else have the responsibility as far as that goes, I have some people in mind, but it might just be easier to do it this way, because no matter what, we're going to have a change in 2023, and again in 2024, some of us are going to not be here, so thank you for your confidence. And League of Cities, I'll go quickly, first of all, we know that we were not able to do it in September due to Hurricane Ian, the League is asking if we would be interested in hosting in February, someone has already asked for January, and if we do, I'm asking for your support, it cannot be as we had thought in the past, and maybe thank goodness for the hurricane, because it was getting to be very expensive, and we probably wouldn't be able to do it for another twenty years if we were to have continued the way we were going, it was a little bit more than I thought, things are just astronomical anymore, so I'm asking that perhaps we relocate to our beautiful golf club, the Delray Beach Golf Club, not my favorite place, but due to expenses and funding...
Can we not have him, can we not get on the list at a later date when prices kind of come down again after...
Do you think they're going to come down, I don't...
Well, I mean, well, I'm thinking after season, you know, where there's a little bit more opportunity.
Well, I don't think it was season that was causing the problem, and in addition to that, there was a requirement that we pay for parking, that's another thing that would be eliminated, they gave us their best, but it was going to be thirty dollars a car to park, so it's, it's all crazy.
Okay, so I'm, I'm open to it, Mr. Moore, did you want to add something?
No, nothing more, this is simply the fact that the City of Delray Beach was the host community for the September twenty-eighth event that was originally scheduled to take place at the Opel Grand, arrangements were made to get that all squared away and taken care of, and because of the inclement weather, it was canceled, and therefore, the date in February would be believed Wednesday, February twenty-second. Likewise, that direction would be appropriate.
It's close to our...
Tennis tournament.
Yeah, I was going to say...
The tennis tournament will end two days before that.
It's the third, fourth Wednesday, whatever the fourth Wednesday is.
Twenty-second.
I would say just...
Thank you.
I'm okay with it.
It's fun.
Yeah, we can host it.
Thank you, I'll direct, I'll tell them that, you agreed, consensus. Each of you should have received from me a copy of the Every Parent Resource Guide, I'd like to... I'd like to ask a consensus to have Mr., I wrote his name down, uh, Mr. Uh, 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 what did I write it? The gentleman who's presented this to us, there is a lot, well, first of all, this is an independent district that is taxed. Every person who pays taxes pays for this service. And I don't think the City of Delray Beach utilizes it enough. We're not, I'm not personally aware of it. There was a lot of information that we could use disseminate to our citizen, our residents, our citizens, residents, um, especially our school system could, I think, participate a little bit more. He was very excited when I said I was from Delray Beach. He said that Chi, the Chao Achievement Centers uh, is a participant of it, but I think there are other organizations who would benefit from it. He would bring the brochures, we'd have them available for our um, outside uh, distribution. And I think it'd be, it would be worthwhile to put it on the record that these services are avail, available. We're paying for them. I don't know that they're being utilized properly, or if you don't know, you can't use something. And lastly, um, the League was asking that the city sign up for the lawsuit that I could proudly say we'd already signed up to. This is just a little handout that they had that uh, since we really didn't get a lot of information because uh, they didn't hand it to us, uh, our technological presentation wasn't available.
I emailed it to you.
Exactly, but um, something, I don't know if this was in there or not. If not, it was great. I believe Delray is the only one, maybe a couple of others have signed up, and they were asking that we sign up, so...
You're already there.
Mission accomplished, thank you.
Very good, thank you, um, Commissioner.
Nothing for me.
Um, super quick, Parks and Rec, I don't know if Sam's gone, but, oh, Sam. Amazing Kid Fest, it was outstanding. There was a petting zoo, which was shocking to me, frankly. I felt bad for the animals. And more activities than you could imagine. Both Danielle's, Pearson, Beardsley, unbelievable. It was a really great event and I thank you, you know. And once again, it shows how you've embraced taking over, you know, some of the activities at Old School Square and really making them amazing. I wanna thank you for that. And then, this next comment isn't gonna be um, as pleasant, and I'm even sorry that I have to bring it up, but I do. Um, Ryan, sadly, I received an email that you wrote about me to the school board and I was pretty, I, I was, I have to say extremely disappointed. Um, and I'm gonna read it so that people understand what I'm talking about. You wrote, during the Delray Beach City Commission meeting on ten eleven twenty-two, Commissioner Julie Casal made a few discouraging remarks regarding the Palm Beach County School District. And then you went on to say, because I have received a number of calls relating to these statements, I feel it necessary to qualify the following. Any negative generalizations made by Commissioner Julie Casal about her disappointment in or perceived failure of the school district does not in any way represent a shared viewpoint. And then you further said, although these comments were made on the record from the dais during the course of a formal city meeting, these negative and critical assertions should be seen as representing Ms. Casal's individual and personal views only, and in no way reflect the position taken by or supported by our city. Thank you for your time and commitment to our students, teachers, and supporting staff. And so look, one thing, it's disappointing because we all come here to work together and I feel like I bring that attitude. I try and be positive, happy, polite, and pleasant to everybody. It's unprofessional. You failed to include what the conversation was about. You failed to include other comments that were made and singled me out personally. But furthermore, and that, none of that is neither here nor there. I would never do that to you, I won't do that to you, but I'm okay. But here's my biggest problem. You broke our procedural rules. Because when you send out an email that is your opinion, you, when you say shared view, you weren't speaking for Ms. Johnson, I don't think. You weren't speaking for the mayor, I'm assuming. Was he speaking for you?
I don't, was I here?
Oh, you weren't even here.
Right, so you sent this out on city letterhead from your city account without a disclaimer saying this is your personal opinion alone.
What as, what aspect of it? It, it wasn't a shared view. We didn't all agree on your comments. It was your comments alone.
Correct, but you are not allowed to communicate on your official capacity containing the personal views of a commissioner. You must include the following disclaimer. These are your views. These aren't a shared view. You must include the following disclaimer. The opinions reflected herein belong to the author and do not reflect the City of Delray Beach policy.
That's exactly what I was clarifying in that email.
No, no, no. You have no disclaimer on this.
It wasn't a shared view. I didn't say that this is a shared view.
You have to use, it's a quote, it's required.
That was an issue. Let me, let, let me say that after receiving those phone calls, you have to be really careful what you say here on the dais.
So do you.
And when you say certain things, it gets back to our colleagues, it gets back to the county, it gets back to the school district as, did you hear what Delray Beach said last night? Did you hear what the commission said last night? And so after getting a few phone calls, yeah, I did, I did send an email to, to my colleagues to, at the school district to ensure that that isn't what's gonna come across. Cause those comments weren't made or shared by, by the, by all of us, that they were comments of yours, and I clarified that.
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
One sec, I, no, wait, I'd like to respond.
Oh, come on, let me, please, finish just talking. I listened to you and now I, I'm just gonna take my turn. I didn't include your quotes because I didn't, I didn't wanna make that email worse.
Please.
So I, I didn't wanna put your...
The school system isn't amazing? I, I would stand by that.
Our schools aren't amazing, um, is what we said.
I didn't, I said the system isn't amazing.
Go back and, go back and look at your quote, but, and, and... But, but this is, but this is, this is really, this is really important. Um, I've had colleagues up here send emails out to every single vote, voter attacking me on something that I said.
Here's the issue I have.
Man, you cannot let me finish talking, can you?
Because you are constantly treating me the way that you feel someone else treats you, but you're not giving me the courtesy of treating me the way that I treat you.
So, you know, here, here's, here's...
Didn't follow our rules and it's disrespectful and you're concerned about your colleagues in the school board when in reality, you probably should be a little concerned about your colleagues here.
Listen, I have to tell you, I went back and reviewed it because I did, I, I did hear that there was a letter sent out and it did basically come from you, Mr. Boylston, and it was representative, um, because it had the letterhead on it as if it was coming from this commission. Nobody on this commission said, okay, send that letter, Mr. Um, Boylston. I don't think that you have the authority to send a letter on behalf of anybody on this commission without asking us first. That's number one. Number two, when I went back and reviewed it because I wanted to find out, what did you say? She did say that our schools aren't that amazing because of something that Commissioner Johnson had mentioned, that the schools should be stepping up to this program. And she said, well, they won't, our schools are not that amazing, whatever it was that you said, and on those lines. At that point in time, I have to tell you, Mr. Mr. Frankel steps in and starts talking about we need to do an audit on the schools, if you remember, so you were there. That's correct. So what I'm trying to say here is that there was a lot of discussion going on in that meeting in order to be able to try to help us understand what Julie was looking for. It wasn't the time to write a letter, and by the way, you're the only person, I'll bet you up here, that got any calls. I didn't get a call. Did you get a call? Did you get a call? Did you get a call? No. You're the only one that seems to get these calls out of nowhere that puts you right in. And by the way, the next day, you know, here comes Randy Schultz writing about it. So you sent that letter directly to Randy Schultz. It just takes a different tone and it's not one that I am, I am willing to accept up here. I got chastised for sending out an email, I haven't sent one out since. But that doesn't give you the right to start talking on behalf of us. We're not, we didn't give you that, okay? And so the bottom line is, is that to directly go after her, one person, when there was a con, con, common conversation going up here, and this is the only time we have the ability to talk.
Right.
So it's not your job to go tattle, because if that's what we are going to say is, okay, I'll start making notes up here. Nobody's gonna like it. And I don't wanna do that, Ryan. I think that what we need to do is, you're always talking about civility, that wasn't civil in, in any way, shape, or form. Three times you mentioned this woman's name, three times in that letter. Unacceptable. And on behalf of this commission, unacceptable. And so here's the deal. I personally think you retract it. You write an apology and you retract it. You did not have that right. That's the bottom line. And then in the future, if you wanna write something on behalf of this commission, you come to us first and we'll tell you yes or no. I have to do that, do I not? I come before this commission to ask before I write anything out, because I'm writing it on behalf of this commission.
May I speak now?
I don't know, I don't think that we need to say anything more. I think that you need to just make a retraction and an apology.
Really, I think it should be ending, cause it's not, I'm not looking for it for a long...
There's no way I'm not going to finish my statement.
If someone called me...
You interrupted, and then you interrupted.
Oh, you know what, okay, so you know what, let's give you the floor so that you can go ahead and dig a deeper hole for yourself. Go right ahead.
I think it's only fair.
Go right ahead.
So first of all, there was no letter. I sent an email. So there was no, there was a reference in regards to official letterhead.
Technicality.
There's no official letterhead. There was no official letter. So I did send an email. Yeah, I think that's important to clarify. Two, my colleagues, your, Ms. Johnson, Mr. Frankel, your comments were constructive and they were about accountability. They were not statements about our schools not being amazing. And two, our school district not caring about the individuals or having programs for the individuals, which is incorrect. They have many, many programs that focus on the individuals at our school district level. Those comments are very different than comments about accountability and making sure that we're getting our share of the attention from the school district. Very different. Three, I'm sorry, Mayor, but you make comments in regards to all the phone calls you get on all types of topics that I don't get. We all get different, we all get different phone calls. My wife is a teacher, I actually have relationships at the district, my kids are in our schools. I'll get those calls where you might get the calls in regards to, I don't know, the school, um, the school swimming lap team. I never got a phone call, but that was a really big thing for you. I still have yet to get a phone call about paddleball, um, but you guys pickleball, but you guys get those all the time. We get different phone calls depending on what we're involved in. Um, I didn't send anything to Randy. I think all you have to do is, you know, connect the dots on who it was sent to and who they're involved with and who would send that over to him. I didn't want anything in the press. This was simply an email to my colleagues. I did not say it was a shared, and I said the opposite. It is not a shared opinion. Your comments are not a shared. I said the opposite of what you are saying, I said.
I'm your colleague, and if someone called me about you, I would direct them to you. And I have done that. In fact, I can show you the emails where people write to me and I say, actually, they write to me giving me credit for something. And I say, actually, Mr. Boylston did that, you should, you should commend him.
Yeah, but that doesn't address my concern in regards to this going out into, to the world and getting back to the school district.
Schools have...
Delray said this, where the commission said this. So I wanted to clarify that. I am more than happy to send an email to my, to uh, my colleagues at the district level, the same individuals that I sent it to, and say that it was not a shared opinion. What, in my email was not a shared opinion, it was the opinion of me and only me, which is stated in the email, but I'm happy to restate it again.
It's not stated in the opinion, in, in the email, but...
Okay, I'm, I'm hap, I'm, I'm more than happy to send that email.
Is some professional courtesy amongst the group. That's what I'm really looking for.
I'll, I'll tell you, I don't, I don't use my campaign emails, never have, never have. You have, you have. They, they, official letters from the commissioner, official letters from the mayor, but they're campaign emails. And you file so early that you can send them and they're not even looked at like campaign emails. I've never done that. I'm also not on Fa, I'm also not on Facebook constantly, constantly commenting on city business, like some of my colleagues. I'm not. So I, I could have put this in an email and sent it out, I didn't. I could have gone on Facebook and posted, I didn't. I simply sent it to my colleagues at the school district level, the school board, ensuring that they know that Delray Beach did not say our schools aren't amazing, that we did not say that they don't have programs for individuals. That's all I wanted to clarify with that email. I'm sorry that it ended up in the press. I'm sorry that you think this, as a matter of fact, I think you've given, I, I think you've given this whole comment like a lot more air just from bringing it up here today.
No, I think that basically what we're trying to do is to impress on you that there are certain things that are, are appropriate to do and certain things that aren't. And that was not an appropriate thing to do.
I disagree.
Well, it's in the rules, so let's just say, let's follow the rules. There are rules of decorum. There are a lot of rules. For example, like when you leave and the vote's over, you don't discuss it, you don't go post, I wish my fellow commissioners would make the ARPA funds available for this. But it's the kind of thing of supporting each other even though we disagree, right? And leaving here happy and coming here happy and sitting across from each other and being professional.
Your, your example, your example is me posting and explaining why, for the first time in my political career, I voted against the budget. That's, that, that's me explaining that.
No, you said the majority voted for it. You're, it, Ryan, I don't wanna keep on going back and forth with...
Let's, let's wrap it up.
Your glass, your glass house here, you're throwing rocks.
It was not professional what you did.
You're on Facebook.
It was completely unprofessional.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? Because I think that Mr., I don't think that Mr. Boylston really understands this. Uh, I would recommend that we write a letter as a commission and if I...
I would recommend the city manager write a letter...
There you go.
To the school board stating that this was his own opinion, not the opinion, and that this conversation came up in a discussion about supplementing the education system to help our children in Delray.
That's correct, so there is a context that is, that is put in there.
Just what opinion did I share on the email? You, you have it in front of you. What opinion did I share on the email?
I think, can I, can we get direction on that consensus?
Well, I want, I wanna make sure he has direction. What, what opinion is he saying?
The entire email was your opinion and not the opinion of the City of Delray Beach or your colleagues.
There literally wasn't an opinion in the email. I didn't give my opinion on anything in that email.
You're stating how you don't want them to perceive things.
Right.
Do we have a consensus, Ms. Johnson? Do you want me to direct you to the rule, Ms. Johnson?
Yes, I'm looking for it.
Okay.
Yes, I'm looking for it, so that perhaps Commissioner Boylston might better understand what you're trying to communicate.
Page eighteen.
Page eighteen.
That's exactly why I don't send out emails to voters or comment on things.
Item nine, three. Nine B three.
Nine B three.
Thank you.
Communication sent in an official capacity containing the personal views of a commissioner Communications sent in an official capacity containing the personal views of a commissioner must include the following disclaimer in a conspicuous location. The opinions reflected herein belong to the author and do not reflect City of Delray Beach policy.
And that's in quotes.
And by the way, Ms. Casal, you sent out several emails when you first started with your commissioner.
Okay, so we're talking about this particular situation.
Without that disclaimer, I just.
We're talking about this particular situation.
I'm not sending them from city email. That's the relevant.
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Moore, you've got your consensus to send that out to retract what was said that it doesn't reflect our.
And what I will do is, once I have this drafted next day or so, I will circulate it to each of you all so that you're all comfortable with the content, and then we'll release it from there.
And and just in addition to this conversation and verification, if we are going to do this, we must have that quote on conspicuous. Maybe we could even enlarge it so that everyone understands whatever you're saying, whatever we perceive.
I put on every email. Can I just put on every email?
Okay, so.
I'll just put it in the footer of every.
Moving on. You said nothing. Okay, I I think it's back to me. All right. So I just wanted to mention number one. We had a huge, busy week. It was great. And we had started off with the witch's ride and the night before the festivities on the grounds, and we also had the Kids Fest, which I think you already mentioned. We also had Delray Reads this week. I wanted to just very briefly bring that up. I think that we're going to work on getting it back to the way that it was so that we can actually have a launchpad and do the things that we were doing before. I know we haven't had it in a couple of years because of COVID, but I think that that kind of kickoff ceremony, and I know that we didn't have Janet Meeks kind of running the show this time, so it was a little bit different. And so I think we're going to try and move it backwards if that's okay with everybody, I presume.
And may I just report to you that I was told we had one hundred and thirty readers.
Fantastic. Okay, the second thing I wanted to bring up was that we have two very big things going on over at Old School Square, Delray to the Dogs, The Taste of Recovery, both Saturday and Sunday. Dogs is on Sunday. Taste of Recovery is on Saturday, so just making sure I had the cleaning up of the waste. But I also wanted just to make that announcement so everybody knows things are going on over there. Then also that this is kind of an interesting thing, and I think I brought it up in the past, but again, with the witch's ride and with the kids all around the tree, we put that tree up so far in advance that it just feels to me like we could be using it for something else. And I've said this over and over again. Why can't we make that hat, like a witch's hat? And then move it into something that is more traditional for Thanksgiving, not the lighting of.
Like a turkey?
Well, whatever. I'm thinking that there might be somebody out there that could actually do a cool brim around the bottom of the hat or that thing. And and if we can light it up in just purple lights or something, that would make it really, really cool or something like that where we can use it for three holidays instead of just one. It's just an idea. And I thought that, you know, because of the fact that we're already celebrating down there, why not make that into something?
Multi-purpose Christmas.
Multi-purpose Christmas tree. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna have somebody start looking into that if it's okay, if I got a consensus.
I love it.
Okay, and then we'll talk about if there's how much cost and all that kind of stuff comes with it. All right. And then, so I did the Delray to the Dogs. Okay, so there was also an event over the weekend at Atlantic High. I think everybody was talking about the the trees planting a hundred. They said a hundred and fifty. I don't know. I heard a hundred. But anyway, it was a lot of trees. Just on that campus, they're going to be doing other campuses as well across our city to increase that tree canopy. But the tree canopy means nothing as an increase if we just keep taking down the tree canopy in the process because it's like it would take a thousand of those little sprawling for some of these big legacy trees. I really think that we need to look at our legacy trees, you know, trees in our our city that we can actually deem legacy to hold on to them so that we're not going two steps forward and five steps back with with the trees that we're trying to put in. And we're spending a lot of money. This is taxpayer money that we are cooperating with the, you know, community greening. Second to last, there was, you brought up, and I did not follow up because you had a, you had a, I guess, an anniversary dinner.
Thank you.
You were talking about at the very beginning, and we talked with the police and fire with respect to showing up at the different, you know, events around town. And I think that there is no real policy. I mean, it's kind of like this is a reach out to our community, which I agree with a hundred percent. However, I also think that there probably should be somewhat of a policy.
I'd like to see it.
I mean, I'm I'm not talking about like a strict, you know, like we want, but I'm saying that, you know, just I'm thinking that if it goes through C-Tech and it is an event that's large enough, it makes sense because now you've got a great group of people that you're reaching. But a lot of times I see just the people that are the vendors there, and then we've got the truck and the fire. And and these are, I think these are people, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Moore. This is overtime. This is not, you know, a lot of these are overtime, so we're paying for this. This is not.
Overtime or extra hour stipend?
What we try to push is for it to be within the hours of their operation. So in other words, fire rescue staff who happen to be at the fire station closest to the event will have the opportunity to go by.
I heard that. That was, that's true.
So that's the principal function.
So they basically vacate that and come over here, and then they're going to just take off from there to whatever the emergency is.
In essence, yes, but it's not a full vacation of the fire rescue facility, but staff are there. But they're actually on staff during the time of the event.
Right. Understood. But I still think we should have policy because I think that it does. It does kind of go outside of.
For the police ice cream truck in specific, the sergeant who was escorting us that night told me he's in charge of that. And it's sometimes manned, the truck is sometimes manned by police officers who are looking for community service hours. So it it isn't overtime, but they're doing it.
Okay, so regardless, I think maybe let's just have a bigger conversation about it rather than just the the the
The inputs.
Real quick presentation. So maybe have it on a future, maybe workshop, just to discuss.
May I have it proposed as a workshop for early part of the new year? We're already November, December, so I'll make arrangements and I'll work with everybody.
It's not pressing. I just kind of like wanted to follow up with the comments that Commissioner Johnson had made that night that I didn't have the chance to follow up on. So I'd be definitely down for sometime next year. It's fine.
With consensus from the group, I would love to have that direction, and I'll make arrangements, and I'll advise you of a timeframe, but early in the new year.
And I'd like to question that five dollar charge of.
Well, that'd be part of the mix.
And one more, and one more thing, and then I'm done. I just wanted to ask our procurement director, we don't have. We've folded it in. I heard something that was very upsetting to me from our city attorney who just learned about our towing issue. I just wanted to find out, Mr. Moore, if there is a chance of rethinking that procurement director. I think that we do. We're a city that needs to have a specific person that's responsible for procurement. I think it was, it's too much to be expecting.
We'll be making arrangements.
Okay. I just wanted to bring that up. All right, very good.
Got it.
That's it. And hopefully, everybody's in good shape, and we can walk away from here. Just let it, let a breath, yeah, breathe out and and understand that I know sometimes it gets a little rough. Meeting adjourned.